Good evening and welcome to the BMR School Committee meeting for May 28, 2025. At this time, I'll call to order and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Next will be introduction of members.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Erin Bonaco, Millville.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Charles Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Dan Keefe, Blackstone.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pille Galerani, Assistant Superintendent Director of Student Services.
Maya Gonye, BMR Student Council President.
And Jason DeFalcow, Superintendent.
And next, our report from our student representative.
So some updates from the high school. The Spring Track and Field DVC meet will be at Whiteman'sville Christian today. We had many athletes leave school at 12:30 today to catch a bus to Whiteman'sville Christian, where we wish them the best of luck competing in the Dual Valley Conference Track Meet. This week is our last week of AP testing. The final test will be AP Physics on Friday. My final test will be tomorrow for AP Language and Composition, and everyone is very excited with the end of the academic year coming very soon. The National Arms Society inducted new members and officers for the 2025-2026 school year this past week. The Food for Thought class hosted the annual Citizens Tea Event on the 8th in collaboration with senior centers in both Blackstone and Millville. So we had about 30 to earn out for the high school for tea and pastries that were made by the Food for Thought classes at the high school. Senior year is ending for the seniors very, very soon, and their final week will be next week. There is a myriad of senior year activities, including their sports signing, which will be on the 15th, their Community Service Day at the Boys and Girls Club, which will be on 5/20 or 5/21, weather permitting, and their banquet at Arrowhead Acres, which will be on 5/21. They have a class trip, which will be at Martha's Vineyard on 5/28, their Senior Awards Night on 5/29, and lastly, their graduation will be the 30th. The Central District Massachusetts Association of Student Councils is having their transitional meeting for officers on June 1st in West Boylston. Julia Kurencik will be transitioning into her new role as a delegate on the board, and I will be transitioning out of my role as Regional Secretary since I am the State Secretary. And Student Council is also going to be doing a school-wide Rochambeau competition coming up, and perhaps a school-wide bingo planned in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Mike. Next up, Consent to Agenda A, motion to approve the warrants.
So moved.
Motion made by Carrie.
The second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And approval of the minutes from April 10th.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I lost my train of thought in the middle of that. Thank you. Next up is public forum. Anyone wishing to address the school committee is given a three-minute time of it, and feel free to come up. Please state your name and address.
Jeanne Ervon, Blackstone, Mass. I appreciate all that you do, but I'm concerned about the money. We spent $75,000 to move last time plus because we had to give the teachers' money when they moved. So I think the price would be up by now. That's another $75,000 with no guarantee. We were told last time that we would only go to Millville if it was fixed, 100% fixed with no bottled water. Well, nothing's guaranteed. It's not even started. Are they, is there enough classrooms? Are they going to use locker rooms? Are they going to use teacher rooms? And the kitchen up there needs new equipment. When I retired, they took some of that equipment and put it to the other schools because the equipment was broken. So there's more money that we're sinking into that we don't even know if the water's going to work. There's no guarantee. Because it worked in another state, and because it worked in another state, that doesn't mean it's going to work here. So why are we going to do this? And in three months down the road, it's not working. Are we going to move back for another $75,000 plus? That's my tax dollar. I'm on a fixed income. I mean, it's a lot of money, and I have grandkids that are here and grandkids that are out of here. And who's to say they're not all going to move out? So that's where I'm at. It's more money than $75,000 when you think of what we need in that kitchen up there. There's a lot of stuff that left there. So that's my spiel.
Thank you very much. This will be later on in the agenda, and so we'll hear more from the representatives of Millville on that matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. I'd also like to discuss about the budget and concerns money-wise. My name's Rachel Anderson. I'm from Millville. I'm one of the selectmen. Looking at the budget, there's a lot of concerns here, I find. So you have things where there's several lines where there's multiple pencils, and I get that, you know? But what about considering just buying it in bulk? Why don't you consolidate that to one line item instead of going off of Amazon at like what a normal customer price would be? It'd be far cheaper per unit. So there's things like pencils, dry erase board markers, stuff like that, that you could consolidate. In addition to this, there's also things that are super vague and kind of concerning with that. You have a line item that's basically just titled "all eighth grade supplies," and I want to know what's actually broken down there. Because why are you having such an even number for that line item and not explaining what that actually is? In addition, there's other concerns where there's a lot of disposable, like coffee cups and stuff, and do we really need to be spending that much money on stuff like that? There's things such as reusable plates or coffee cups and stuff like that. For people with this, we're all, Millville's facing, you know, budget problems, and we're looking to reduce the amount of spending we have. And yet, we're spending things, your budget looks to spend on things like, you know, switches and gaming chairs and all sorts of stuff like that that seem kind of frivolous. And I'd like a more clear explanation as to why you want to purchase that and how that's actually improving the kids' education. It's fine to have fun things, but we can't afford that at this time. In addition to that, there's a lot of vacancy lines, and that seems concerning because there's a lot of money going into that as well. So there's several vacancy numbers as well as new requests for vacancy positions. I would like to know why there's so many of those. $4,000 for a police detail for athletic services. I would like explanation on to what's the purpose of that, things like that. 12 iPad pencils. Why are we purchasing 12 iPad pencils? Do we have 12 iPads for these kids? And if so, what happened to those previous pencils if they got destroyed? In addition to this, there are things like, something was really confusing to me. I want to know what the Magic Club is. This is for the high school, and its line item, excuse me, is $25,370. And I looked on your website, and I couldn't, I searched up what the Magic Club was, and I could not find anything about that. So I'm just curious as to what that club is and what it entails, and what's the justification for the large number. And lastly, I did skip over things that, but I'm trying to be brief. I'm concerned about the overall budget. I listed a bunch of things that are of concern, but here's something. Hope Dale's School is just shy of just about 400 kids less than us, and their superintendent proposed budget is a little over $15 million, and yet, our budget is over $31 million. So why do they have 400 kids left and they're spending over half as less money than us? Sorry, that was a lot of questions, but I'd like that stuff to be cleared up, and thank you.
Yep, I'm just going to touch while you're here on the Hope Dale comparison. So when you take the 400 kids less, so you would compare that to Blackstone in equal size. What's Blackstone's portion of the budget?
75%.
And what's the total?
Of the, about 12 million.
So Hope Dale, some of their healthcare in the buildings are in the town budget. The regional district budget is all in the regional district. The taxpayers of Blackstone, who send the same amount of kids to go to this district that Hope Dale sends to their district, were paying about 12 million, and Hope Dale's paying 15. So the Hope Dale example is not going to help your argument. It's they're paying $3 million more than the residents of Blackstone.
But I have just listed a bunch of things that seem to be in question, like why are we spending so much money on certain items? Example, we can buy in bulk. Instead, you're doing line by line and buying off of Amazon at prices that we could, would not like to shell over.
I appreciate that.
And my last thing is, we're spending all this money, and yet, our kids' test scores are not doing well.
Sure. And the reference, Hope Dale's paying about $3 million more for their school district than the people of Blackstone of an equal amount of students are paying to send to this district.
Sure, but our kids' education is still not doing well.
Sure. Your concerns were about budget items, and you deflected to education because I just want to clarify on that. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi.
Good evening.
Julie Pickard. I live in Blackstone. I too am on a fixed income. I have had children go through the school district and some grandchildren go through the school district, and I am very concerned about how fiscally responsible we're being in moving back and forth, because that's what it's amounted to, going from Millville to Blackstone, where now you have all these people who are accommodating has been okay at the Kennedy and Maloney School, but Millville can't accommodate the number of kids that we have. I've heard things like, well, maybe the preschool will stay at the Kennedy School. Well, you know, if the water is the issue, and it has been an issue all along with Millville, if water is truly the issue, they should not be returning to Millville. If it is not an issue, we all wouldn't be here. If it's an issue, then it needs to be addressed, but two years down the road, if we have a water, a plan, we don't even know if anything's going to work. So we're talking about moving kids back, using bottled water, but you know, that means that there's, the water isn't good for consumption. It shouldn't be good for cooking, for cleaning, for anything. So my real dilemma is that, you know, we're spending this money on the move itself, and I understand that you compensate some of the teachers or all of the teachers, but you know, in a move like that, the compensation would be for 10 hours, but you know, in reality, it's going to be a lot more than 10 hours that one teacher moves a classroom and sets everything up. I was an art and music teacher in the system and lived on a cart and had my storage at the Kennedy School auditorium, the stage area. That's where I began. But to set up a room, when I finally got an art job and set up an art room, is hours upon hours upon hours. And now you have all these people packing up, moving, and having to reset and reestablish themselves. But to me, the real problem is, we don't even know if the water is going to be good. We don't have that plan yet. We're going to go back with bottled water again, and it shouldn't, that shouldn't happen. It just shouldn't happen. So I voice my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Carrie, no? Okay. Oh.
Hi, Rich Ervon, Blackstone. So the reason why I stayed in this town was because when I came to the school district, I felt like I had a voice. I felt like I was a part of something. And the decision that we're kind of playing around with, I don't feel like my kids are going to, it's for the benefit of my kids. You know, I, like my mom said, like, we talked about coming back to the school when it was 100% fixed. That was it, right? Like, we drew that line in the sand. And now it's, well, maybe we'll go back. Maybe now we have water. Maybe now we'll go back. Like, what happened? Why is this a discussion? The kids are first. That's it. And my three boys, I raised them well, but I'm telling you right now, kids go to the bathroom. Are you going to have a monitor inside the bathroom making sure they're not playing with the water, causing more money to be spent? Doesn't make sense. Like, what's, I don't understand how this is even being brought up. There are so many other things that we need to address here. This is not one of them. The idea was, we hold at, until, we hold the line until it's fixed. It's not fixed. And I respect the fact that everyone's trying their best to get a solution, but it still isn't fixed. That's it. There should be no other discussion behind it. And I don't want some, again, I don't want a monitor in the kids' bathroom making sure that my kids are washing their hands with water. Like, who's to say they're not going to go in there, start splashing water on each other? And like, who's going to monitor that closely? These are all things that, like, we have to think about. I mean, we're all adults. We know that, hey, you're not supposed to splash that water. Hey, you're not supposed to wash those hands. But you're sending five, six, and seven-year-olds into a building. I mean, I believe you all have kids, and like, you all know, like, kids are impulsive. They're absolutely impulsive, and not to their fault, they're learning. But I don't want my kids to learn with something that's not fixed and not safe.
Thank you.
Hello. I grew up here. I went to school here. My son grew up here. He's going to school here. Whether or not it's admitted, there are a lot of problems in our school district. But I guess my biggest question is, when we went through this last year, it was because the water at Millville wasn't safe, and it was to save money. What changed? If the water's not safe and the budget's still tight, why are we having this discussion? There seems to be no explanation, no answer. It's just now brought up again. You know, we were supposed to keep one building closed and save money and less faculty and less maintenance, and now here we are again. Why? For what purpose? It seems to be expanding a budget with line items that make no sense and no answers and no accountability. It'd be nice just to have some truth and transparency, as much as we don't like that word. So if we could get some answers today, that'd be great, because I know, I speak for a lot of parents when I say that there are a lot of problems that are not getting addressed, and you're just going to see more people leaving, whether or not you want to admit that they are.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would encourage the, oh, we got, is someone else coming up?
Cecilia Doyle. And I guess I'm just kind of here maybe to speak for the children, for some of the staff. I've been in the district for 26 years, and I'm kind of reiterating a lot of what other people have said, but just from a different perspective. I do remember the line item that, yeah, we were not going to move until everything was fixed. And that's what I'm hearing, and I don't know everything about all of it. I'm only hearing what we're being told, but as far as I understand, that there has not been a filter put in. It has not been tested. And if we couldn't be there because the water wasn't safe then, my understanding is the water is still not safe now. And not, the children aren't going to be the ones that are going to go, yeah, the water's not safe, and you can tell them that. You're going to bring your bottles of water to school, but let's face it, as he said, the kids are in the bathroom. They use bathrooms. They're five and six years old, and yes, are they going to get water on them? Yes. But also, you have staff members. We are then being exposed to the same thing, that we don't even know what it's going to cause for people down the road. The cost of moving? I know you've got budget, I know you've got estimates and all of that, and I'm sure it's definitely higher than it was before. I can actually say, in terms of staff moving, I know for a fact that the amount of time it takes to move is different for every staff member, but we are an early childhood building at Millville, and let's just face it, they have more in their classrooms. Many of you have been in my room. It takes a lot more time than eight to 10 hours to move, to pack a room and then completely set up a room. I understand that staff are not going to be compensated for all of those hours. They haven't been in the past. Preschool, I've heard, is a proposal that preschool would stay over at the complex. Well, then you have staff members that are going to be traveling back and forth. You're going to have the expense of a nurse needing to be there. Someone has to be there, administrative wife, going back and forth, and those still students are going to miss out on some of the other interactions they do have with their older grade-level peers and those teachers as well. I don't understand why we would not wait until this filter has been put into place and test it for at least a year to see if it's actually going to work and solve the problems it needed to, before we continue to expose children and staff members to that water and the expense it's costing this district. I know this district has very limited funds. So to go at that, the grant's not going to cover everything, and we, again, still don't even know if it works. Would you want your children, grandchildren, or any of you to be exposed to that? Think of your children. I know you've had children in this district. Many of you have. I wouldn't want my grandchildren child that I have now or my own children to have been exposed to something like that. We don't know what these chemicals are doing to our bodies and could have been doing for a while that we've been there. So I just feel like it would be great for the committee to really think about the safety of everybody and the logistics and give it another year. Let this thing get put in place and really find out if it truly works before we get stuck maybe in the middle of next year going, oh gee, this is really bad, and now we have to move out in the middle of the year. Why rush it? Because it's working the way it is. The space is tight over in Millville. We know that. It's going to be very crowded, and the complex right now, it's not in the greatest shape. I know that. I've been here for a long time. But it is fitting everybody in very nicely, and we are making it work over there. So it's just my thought.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else like to address the committee? I encourage all those to stick around when we get to that agenda item regarding the water. There was a lot of information on social media. The school committee has not deliberated or considered any action, and we haven't done so until this evening, which we will consider when we get to that agenda item. Next on the agenda, thank you all for your participation, by the way. Next on the agenda is school committee item, declassification of executive session minutes, December 12, 2024, and March 20, 2025. Motion made by Tara, seconded by Chuck. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is review and approve policies. Item B, I district, security-related technology, related to technology.
Do you want me to? So, good evening, everybody. In your package, you have two policies. They are behind the minutes from the April 10 meeting. There is, the first is EHAA, which is a pretty standard MASC policy. It's just something that we need to put in place regarding the security the district has established as it relates to technology and securing information. And so it's a, it's pretty standard and straightforward, and so we would need a motion to approve EHAA to put this into place.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Let the record show that Jane has arrived earlier.
Thank you. Apology.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. And next would be data and record retention?
Yes. Policy EHB, data and record retention. And there was a small adjustment that needed to be made to that. It just outlines that the custodian of the public records is the superintendent of the district, so you'll see that was redlined. And then we did move that to each of the school webpages and the district webpage, who the custodian of the public records are and how the general public can access that. And so we need a motion to approve, just the small change, to EHB.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next agenda item, discuss and vote placement of Millville students and staff for school year '25, '26. We have representatives from the town of Millville, the town administrator Caruso, vice-chair Gill.
Good evening. I thought we'd maybe start with introductions. So I'm Jennifer Gill, I'm the board's selectman.
Peter Caruso, town administrator.
Christopher McClure, McClure Engineering.
Carrie Antonucci, McClure Engineering. So Chris and Kara are running the project for us, so I thought we could start with, I have a letter here from Mary Jude Piggle. She was unable to be here tonight. And then I thought they could go through the timeline of the project and then answer any questions and then anything like that. So I believe this was shared with you already, so Mary Jude wrote this letter on May 1st, and it's addressed to Peter. It says, Dear Mr. Caruso.
Jennifer, I'm sorry to ask this. Could you speak up for the people in the back, please? And I apologize.
No, it's okay. Do you want me to stand?
You can feel free to. Address the audience.
Dear Mr. Caruso, congratulations again on receiving grant under the Emerging Contaminant Small and Disadvantaged Communities Program. Preparing the application required a high level of cooperation between Mass DEP, the town, and the town's consultant, and I am so pleased that the town's application was successful. I am sorry that I will not be able to attend the school committee meeting next week, but if I could, I would restate that I have said before at those meetings, Mass DEP's position on the use of water at MES is and has been that bottled water is not required for any uses other than drinking water as long as the town is providing bottled water. There is no exposure to drinking water that might exceed institution's drinking water standards. Nothing in Mass DEP's regulations prohibits the school from operating while the town is providing bottled water. My understanding from our conversations is that the town plans to continue to provide bottled water, so there will be no exposure while the work under the grant proceeds, and we did vote for that for the entire school year. Our drinking water program staff are looking forward to working with your consultant to expedite permitting for this important project. As always, please let me know if you have any questions. So just to clarify, and Mary Jude has said in this meeting several times that washing your hands or any exposure like that to this water is not an issue. And just to be clear, the amount of the grant we approved was $1 million, which is more than enough to cover the project, and we have until 2030. And we have until 2030 to spend that million dollars.
Thank you.
So I think, Chris, it's over to you on the overview of the project?
Sure. So, um, again, Chris McClure, McClure Engineering. We are currently, um, operating the water system. I'm a professional engineer, um, in the drinking water industry. And we operate, um, multiple schools. So this project and, and different community water systems. So this project, um, is, uh, has its challenges due to its size. Preliminary, the TOC, uh, the types of treatment that we need are typically, uh, that we see at the school is typically not scaled to this size. So, um, when people talk about this new technology we're looking at, it's, it's technology, um, to remove TOCs, disinfectant byproducts and PFAS. But for a, um, for a school, six gallons a minute is what the well runs at. But typically, the usage at the school is about anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 gallons per day. If you calculate that out, it's about one gallon a minute. So really, really small scale. So the requirement is that we go through a pilot study, which lasts about a year. But this, the system's being monitored, you know, daily, three times a, between three and five times a, uh, week, we'll, we will be on site, depending upon what the DEP requires. But currently, we're there three days a week. So permit goes in, gets reviewed by the state. And we, that's already been submitted. The states are in the process of reviewing. Once they give us their approval, um, the material will be purchased. There's like a two-week lead time for that. So, um, this system could be installed, um, by early, early June. That's, that's the best case scenario, that the state reviews this really quickly and says, let's go ahead with it. Everything that's going into the school is NSF approved. So meaning it meets all, um, this National Sanitation Foundation's requirements for drinking water quality. All the equipment in there would be, so. Once that equipment goes in, it's effectively working to filter your water. All the water, the tank will be clean, the storage tank will be clean. So we can start, you know, fresh with, with that. And all the water that goes into that tank at that point in time will be, um, effectively, you know, finished, treated water to, uh, levels that are, um, levels that are non-detec, basically, for the contaminants that we're, we're talking about. So, um, then that process again is just monitored, um, through, through ourselves and the state. All of the samples go to a certified lab and, uh, we review that and tabulate it. And, um, and, um, and basically, once, once we get a long-term, basically, it's to look at the long-term efficiency and cost effectiveness and operational costs. That's why this thing will go for 12 months. They don't say, hey, it works right now, the samples look good. They just want us to continue to monitor so we can develop long-term operational costs for the, for the school and for the district, uh, going forward. So, do you have any questions? I'd be, uh, happy to answer them.
I think there's a testing schedule also that was shared so you can see how often everything is tested.
Sure. Yeah, we're, again, um, we have every visit with testing for, you know, for, um, disinfectant residuals, looking at the I amangenes. And then we have our required laboratory. So this is, the system is monitored and sampled per the Mass DEP schedule, like all, um, all communities are. So, um, if you have any questions there, yeah, there's a whole list of sample, you know, uh, sample requirements. But, um, and literally, you know, tens of thousands of dollars and just let these go, go into, you know, go into monitoring the school.
I do have a question.
Uh, Tara.
I'm sorry. So you said the pilot study is one year? So it's one year of data that the state's looking for?
Yes, yes. It's one, the, the duration is one year. They'll be looking at the data immediately. We, we expect the system to be effective immediately. The minute, the first drop of water that goes through that system is going to be clean.
But the pilot study, they want one year of data.
Yes, yes. They really want us to monitor the system and make sure that everything's.
And then you mentioned long-term operational cost?
I picked up on that too.
Yeah, can, okay, well, then Dan, you got this one.
Yeah, so you, and I, it may have just been an error. Well, you said long-term operational cost to the district. I think you meant to the town, correct?
Yeah, we pay the water.
Oh, yes. Yeah, sorry about that.
Just clarifying.
Yeah, no.
It was a topic of contention.
Okay, sure, sure.
So we'll leave Peter out of this one now.
Yes, it's already been settled and voted on.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Aaron.
So if I, if I understand everything you just explained, it's, it's also a system and a process that you've never worked with, even though you're in other schools and working with other schools.
The, the TOC removal is typically, um, is typically, TOCs are typical of a surface water source, like a reservoir system. We typically don't see it in bedrock wells. So, um, yes, it's, um, I'm familiar with disinfectant byproducts and chlorine residuals. On the TOC removal, typically in order to address those, they're building, they're, they're building large, you know, um, 5 million gallon per day plants to, to, to address these, these types. But this filter media is, is able to scale it down to, you know, to the schools.
But this new filter system that is going to be piloted, it's not approved by the state yet. You said you're waiting, you expect to have it to be able to install by the beginning of June, best case scenario. You've never worked with before, with.
This particular filter, we have not worked with before, yes.
Do we have a copy of the testing schedule that you?
I have it. I just got it today. So I'll send it to the committee. I just got it this, uh, this morning, I believe.
You're not going to drill a new well, kind of reuse the? The primary focus is to, the permitting and, uh, construction of a new well does take some time. And that is, that is on, you know, in our, um, scope of work. But, um, the primary importance is to get this, this filter system in and, 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 and work both, um, processes simultaneously. But the filter system is a much quicker, um, process than installation, construction and permitting of a new well.
The filter system that was in the permit that you submitted, am I understanding that right?
Yes.
That's all included in the permit?
Yes, yeah.
But are you saying that a well is part of the million dollar scope right now?
Yes.
And just curious, I, I know a million dollars is a lot of money. But I do also know the money that's been spent on the water in Millville for years before all of us were here. Is, is the intention of the town to pay for the bottled water for the next school year from that million dollars? Or is it ARPA funds or?
It's from the, it's in, what's in the budget, the $90,000 that's remaining in the annual town budget that we voted on last night.
So none of the million dollars will go towards?
We pay for the bottled water. Mm-mm.
Okay.
That's, it's specific on the new project and Mary Jude was very clear on what we can spend that million dollars on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And, and I just, just to clarify, like, has it been, has it been a year and a half, two, two years?
Two.
Two years, two years.
It's been two that we had to move the kids.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we, we started this two years ago with two conflicting water operators' reports to this committee, challenging ownership of the water, um, challenging having to provide bottled water. And so we are here today, the commitment from the town of Millville, voted by the taxpayers of Millville to provide the bottled water, the acceptance of the grant, uh, from the DEP, knowing that this is a new technology for the Mass DEP. That's why they're going to scrutinize it, I would imagine closely and, and have that pilot program. And so, and, and the, and the, in the Millville representatives had, you know, reached out to us to consider what we're considering this evening. So, and, and so we've, we've come a long way to that point. Other things this, what the committee has been doing, working in cooperation with the town of Millville, is the liability of the 850,000 that the MSBA has been gracious enough to waive any enforcement on because the school has been non-compliant with the MSBA loans for the roof and other work there. So, so we've come from a, a time where the district was paying for the water a few years back on its own to now.
Bottled water.
Bottled water, so, yes, bottled water. Millville challenging the ownership of the water to now Millville fully committed to the water, the ownership and rectifying, um, the issue, you know, the, the issue with state backing. So that's what's in essentially, you know, to, in short, that's where we are this evening.
And I have one more question.
Sure, you can have it, you, all night long, you can question it.
I guess it's a per se. What about the bathrooms? Do the faucets stay on?
Yeah.
Cause I know when, um, Jen, when you were speaking about Mary Jude's thing, she said no exposure. But the faucets are on in the bathrooms, right? Okay.
So they can wash their hands?
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, they're saying it's safe.
Have, have we considered, instead of like bottled water, has there been conversation about how that water is going to be delivered? Is it going to be the truck that we filled the tank with at one point?
We can't fill the tank because then he can't do his work. So the, the water from the system, from the well is what goes into the tank.
So how is it being supplied for cooking and cleaning?
Like big bottles of water. We, at the town meeting last night, we saw like five gallon jugs in the music room.
Right, but the cafeteria isn't even in, in use right now. So is, is that going to be something that's up to us, an operational decision on how kids are washing their hands and cooking is happening?
Yeah, it was going.
Do you have that as part of your proposal?
Not just hand washing, just if the bathrooms are not being monitored, who's not to say? I mean, my kids bring their own bottle like this to school. You know, who's not to say they go in there and fill it? That's kind of where I was going, not really the hand washing.
Okay.
More of who's watching the exposure until it's fixed.
Jane.
I'm cautious about how I want to say this. But, um, I, I know that this has been an ongoing issue, more so than just the two years, probably for about 15 or 16 years. Having a child who spent seven years in a school, carrying a water bottle every day and working with my child as a four-year-old in the preschool, that's when she started, seven years in the school, working with my child to say, you don't drink out of the, the faucets were closed, the, the bathroom faucets, yeah, they were there. You don't drink, because it's not a hand washing issue. It's a drinking ingestion issue. And bottled water has been on, in that. And I, you know, I was one of the proponents who said, we need to fix, we need to fix the water. We need to fix the water. We need to find a solution. I'm still, but I, I think we've been presented with a solution. I think it's a facility that offers many advantages along with some disadvantages. Just like the complex offers advantages and many disadvantages. But I think we've asked the town to do something. They're doing something. And as parents, we probably have responsibility. But I don't think the bathroom issue is the issue. I'm not saying no kid will go up to the faucet and put their head under it. I'm, I'm not saying that. But I think there, we are an educational institution that will educate these young, young, very young, three, four, well, no, it won't be the preschool, so five, six-year-olds, like what that means. But as parents, as family members, as community members, we, we have that responsibility too.
Aaron.
So when do you expect approval from the state for the pilot?
Uh, they have up to 60 days to approve it, but they feel it's going to expedite it. So we expect to, um, you know, within.
What date, was it submitted?
It was submitted, um, May 7th. So we expect it by the end of this. They've already provided us with a response and some, and review, so.
But 60 days from May 7th would be the.
60 days is to, is their schedule for permit review.
Okay.
Chuck.
What are the repercussions from the MSBA loans to keep the kids there one more year at the complex? What, are there ramifications for doing that?
Okay, Dan. Yes, if you would.
Sure. Uh, my last conversation with them, uh, they authorized the second year without requesting payment, what they call a clawback on the grant to Millville. But they said if it goes beyond that, uh, we would now need to have an additional, a very serious conversation.
Can we have that serious conversation?
Sure.
I, I don't think that should be the reason that we feel like we're under the pressure right now. Because honestly, to me, this all feels, and we don't have Jason's proposal on the move yet, expense or space. We don't have an approval on the, on what they're going to do with this money. So how can we make a, a, this, an educated decision tonight? I, I mean, is it something we can talk about in July? We made that last move in July.
So there's nothing, so this is just, this is just an agenda item? We can make a decision on it? We're not required to make a decision on it? Uh, we can get the information. We have got the input from the public. We're getting the input from the town of Millville, the input from the professionals. I mean, you're right, we made this decision in July. There is an opportunity, um, it could be tomorrow you could get the approval. It could be two weeks we get the approval.
We have meetings.
There's, it's not a requirement for us to make, um, this decision tonight. I'd like to, like, no, um, so my biggest concern was no, um, impact to the students and whatsoever. There's, there's no, um, you know, vulnerability to the, to the, to the students. I think that was all of our concerns. The DEP has been very clear that it's essentially, the danger is consumption. And cooking, I think it was soft foods, the, the absorption.
Absorption foods. And the consumption level is quite high.
Yeah.
It's this, it's two liters a day for 70 years every single day. So I don't know that you would even achieve that in five years of school, um, but it's. We have staff that have been there for 30 years. I, I just, I feel like every time you say that, Jennifer, it goes right through me. I just want you to know, we all know what the data says. But if you're living it and, and drinking it and exposed to it every single day as a staff member, they're, they're much longer than the kids. And for, and frankly, my kids went to school with a water bottle every day. But it still didn't feel right. It was still worried, worried that they were going to take a drink out of the bubbler or, or get splashed in the face or, and I, I really, we know the data. But the fact of the matter is, there's a risk there, period. Why would we put any kids or staff in that position? I think we are the closest we've ever been to fixing this problem. That's thrilling to me. But we're not there yet. We're not. And I am very happy that Millville got this grant. I am, I see this going in a much better direction than it's ever been, but we're not there yet. I, I need an approval on that pilot program. I personally don't see the results of the pilot program. I, I haven't even felt good that our, our administrators are in that building for the last few years. And they're the ones that had to take the brunt of the bottled water or the exposure.
So if Mary Jude were here, she would say there is no exposure if there's bottled water.
We all know that.
So, but she's the expert, correct? She's the regional director for Mass DEP. So she governs drinking water for the entire central district, so.
Can I ask another question to the McClure? The surface water that's found in our drinking water at that facility, do you see that in other places? Surface water, TOCs.
Well, the TOCs, um, I, I don't have experience with the, the level of TOCs that we're seeing there. Uh, there, there is, they have tested for groundwater under the influence of surface water. And those tests have come back negative. So, um, we're talking about a, a well that's 1,000 feet deep, that's, you know, that's bored into, you know, different subsurface lithologies that, you know. So it's, it's, it's pretty unique to.
So never before?
I, I have not experienced in a, in a bedrock well.
Thank you.
Thank you, any, any other questions?
In our packet, we're provided the, what seems to be the proposed move plan, are we at that point yet? Can we discuss that or?
Yeah, not at that point, but I mean, if it's in the packet and you have a question on it.
Well, I'll just say, on top of all this, it seems as though there is a, the plan, is this the plan that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm assuming you're going to present that to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well. Look, was the idea to present it if we took a vote?
We can present it for information.
Okay, yeah, that's.
If the committee.
So some of, obviously some of the residents had some chat questions on the, on the move plan, so I would, well, we, if we have it, we can address it. And so, and so the only thing is, I would, I would ask the superintendent, because it does make a difference. Obviously, all things being fair and that there's, the exposure is zero to the kids if the water is provided by, by the town of Millville. We do need to know if the town of Millville is going to be hit with $850,000 reimbursement payment. We absolutely need to know that, because they can't afford, neither town could afford that, but like, so. And I would ask that if we're, if the board, if the committee is considering, we can continue this to our next meeting, but I would definitely want the superintendent to reach out to MSBA. And they have to go through the same thing you've gone through the last two years and get a response from them. Because that, that, we cannot make that determination. We can't say, hey, you know, you guys don't have to pay the 850 grand back, you know. So, so if the board is, the committee is, has nothing else regarding this, and you don't object to continuing this conversation, this portion of it, to the next meeting, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Well, the next meeting's next Thursday, I think, I really think it's going to be June personally, for them to have time.
Well, what we'll do is, we can continue it to the next meeting if that information is not available. I mean, we can, well, when's the next meeting after that, three weeks, is that about three weeks out?
We've had this as a standing agenda item for many months, so why don't we just keep this as a standing agenda item?
The town of Millville will inform us if they've heard back, as Jen, as Jen would do.
Actually, no, I won't be back on Thursday.
It's a week from Thursday.
Someone will be back, a week from Thursday?
A week from Thursday.
Oh, no, I can come back then if I need to. Love to.
Yeah, we can, we can, I mean, we can keep it, I would keep it as a standing.
Is it okay to just add one piece?
Sure.
So just from a timeline perspective, I do want to underscore the importance of a decision, if possible, before the end of the school year. Our staff has many responsibilities over the summer. I know we did it in the summer last time, and I understand it was late in July and there was, but I know it also came at a cost to our staff to come in, in kind of the, you know, the dead of summer, packing their things, and they did. They did all the right things, so, you know, a shout out to our faculty for that. But if we can make that decision before, that would be really important for them, because they want to get their things packed, they want to get their rooms set up, and as a former elementary school teacher, you are putting hours and hours of time into your classroom setup. So just, our educators out there, absolutely hear and see that, if it's possible, that would be helpful.
Tara.
So I greatly appreciate that the system is getting put in place. I, however, am not comfortable going forward with them moving at all without any results. I agree with everyone who spoke tonight, other voices that have been said. I just don't think we're ready to say yes without any test results. So I think it's really important that we get the MSBA to understand that we don't have the answers to say yes for this coming school year. So we need them to weigh in on how, if they can keep this emergency placement, removal from the school wording, I'm not in favor of moving the kids back this year.
There's a reason why the pilot study is a year.
At one point, we had hoped for 180 days of clean water to replicate what was a school year. And we had said like, that was our line that we were going to hold.
That was our last.
Yeah.
That's what we had stood.
So I understand the parent concern and the staff concern about being moved back there.
So do we, spoke tonight then? I don't know, do I make it wait till another meeting? But I have one question from Jason. The two years that we've been in this predicament, and I was the chair when this started, we had conversations about MSBA, and there was never a waiver of concern, they were always understanding. So is there something that has changed? Because never has that been even a conversation of a problem. That they have been very understanding, the building is still part of our district. Why all of a sudden is that kind of being put out there as one of the reasons that we need to put the kids' safety behind money?
So I want to be clear about this. That is not what I'm saying, and I don't think that's what anybody's saying. I think it's a factor. Chuck asked the question, I think it's a good question, and I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a fair question to ask. It's a significant amount of dollars, you'd never put money ahead of the safety of children. I made the recommendation to the school committee two summers ago to move the kids. I sat right in this chair and made that recommendation, so I want to be really clear about that. But that being said, we did discuss, when MSBA and I had the discussion, that was the director of operations, had the discussion about the second year, that if this were to go beyond two years, there would need to be a very serious conversation, because they were foregoing the clawback on the grant for those two years, but that may not be the case should we continue to move forward with this plan. I'm not saying anything, I will not speak for the MSBA, but I certainly would have that conversation as requested, because I do think it's an important one to ask.
I mean, I think if anything, they'll feel more assured that there's a grant in place and the work is to come.
They may, yeah, they may, we, I don't know. But that's certainly a conversation I'm happy to have with them.
And I did ask, the first year, I asked Jason to follow up with the MSBA, out of the concern not of, for the, because of the decision that we were making to move the kids, I wanted to ensure that we weren't going to get blindsided by, or Millville wasn't going to get blindsided by that, having to pay that reimbursement. And I asked him again, the second year to follow up on that, to essentially get an email or some type of evidence that Millville's not going to pay a bill, or be, you know, and, and so for that, that was for that purpose. We do, I'll just point out that, and I understand everybody's concerns, but this is already the application for the grant, and the application for the grant, is this technology?
Yes.
That's right, so the application for the grant, for the million dollars, that's the technology that was approved. $36 million was available by the EPA, through the state of Massachusetts. The town of Millville got 1 million of that $36 million. So I know the EPA and the DEP is very confident that this system is going to work. There's a one-year pilot study, because this will probably become the norm, or one of the accepted norms in Massachusetts, one that's successful.
And if I could, you know, everything goes well, I, I, I obviously use the maximums for all of my scheduling. You don't have to be remiss if I didn't, but they have, they have instructed, it may not be a year, it works fabulously, and we get the longevity out of it. But again, the monitoring is never going to be, never going to stop, because we always sample for these, for these parameters regardless. So the, on the first day that we start filtering water, that water is going to be clean and into a, you know, a clean and disinfected tank as well, so. That's, that's, you know, that's how this system is going to operate, so.
Okay. I have a resident that has a question that I'm going to allow to come up off to the side if you want. I noticed you came here, you got here a little bit late, so.
I'm sorry, you had to be rid of me sooner, but I did come a little bit late. The main question that I have, because I don't disagree with a lot of the other questions about the water, but I think it's maybe more of a budgetary and administration standpoint, because we just spent two years consolidating to three buildings, including three principals, three different types of administrative staff, three special ed teams, like what are the implications that is this really going to have if we were to break it up again into four? Because I'm concerned that from like the children's perspective, like this is inconsistent to them. So now they're, they're being shuffled between schools and things are not the same. But then from a level of service, where we do know that we have a lot of vacancies and we've lost a lot of specialists and whatnot, that we're going to be stretched even more thin across four buildings if this is the path that we're taking. So that's for me a concern, from, again, from staffing, administration, service providing, and the budget.
Okay, and so there was just a quick misconception at the beginning of this. When we consolidated to, from four to three, three, yeah, four to three schools, we were, we made it very clear that we were staying at that. And so, and when it eventually moves back to Millville, there would be, we wouldn't be filling the, the, the complex, correct? Essentially, it wasn't going back to four principals and four.
No.
So I'll hand it to you, hand it off to you.
Yeah, so the budgetary, from an administrative perspective, the budgetary impact is insignificant. So we're not adding back a principal, we're not adding back, you know, that support staff. The staffing model we have now will actually work for what we are, well, what we would propose if we were to make the proposal tonight, or whenever that may come, would be to have the preschool stay at the complex and move grades K through three to Millville Elementary. Jill, along with Jessica Sinclair, HR specialist, and Christina met with the preschool teachers. They had a conversation with them about potential and upcoming changes. With the administrative staff we have now, we don't need to add anybody. We have enough staff to do that, with our nursing staff, we have enough staff to do that. We don't have, we don't, I'm not sure of the vacancies you're referring to, Tanya, but we don't have tons of vacancies, that's just not true. Sorry, but I'm going to, I just kept to call it out, because that's the rhetoric right now, that it hasn't been true and it's not true. Are there vacancies? Yeah, we have a couple vacancies, but there's not a ton of vacancies. So I want to identify that and clear that up once and for all. But as far as the staffing pattern that we have, we have enough nursing staff, we have three nurses and an LPN. We have enough staff. For our administrators, we have three principals, we have two assistant principals. We also have, we have a educator, that is a preschool educator, that is a licensed early childhood director. So should we need an individual to step into that role? Not saying that that's going to be the formal title, what we're going to do, I can see all the things that you're doing there, but so I'm happy to have a discussion with you offline about this. This is a very well thought out plan, Tanya, this is what we do every day, all day, so we know what we're doing. We have an individual that can step into that role, should we need that level of support. So we have the nursing staff, we have the administration, ready to go. Also, don't forget that central office would move out of Millville and would go back into where we were at the complex. So we would go back to where we were, we'd be in the same building with the preschool. So there is plenty of staff that we have available to assign to support those students on a daily basis. We also have about four or five students that eat lunch. So out of all of the PK students, which in a year it can be between 60 and 80 students, depending on the year, about four or five have lunch, so we would, we would move the food over. We have a van that's equipped for that, so we could send over five lunches for the children. So we have a very well thought out plan, if and when this ever happens. But this is what we do, we prepare for these things, and we're ready to implement should that decision be made at some point.
Sure.
You're saying you have enough staff, so like, for example, like the nursing staff. If you're going to keep pre-K in one building and then move everybody else to Millville, so is this going to be nursing staff available in both buildings?
Yes, so we have four, we have four members of our nursing team. We have an LPN that right now rotates throughout the buildings. We would have the LPN assigned at, with the preschoolers, and then we have our three nurses. So they collaborate and they, frankly, they rotate, they go to each other's buildings, they check in with each other, the LPNs in all the buildings. So we have, and you might remember this, the school committee, when we did this, when we consolidated, asked to add the LPN back. So we do have four nursing staff onboard.
Okay, well, we might as well, we had some residents that asked about the move, so fill us in on the move. If, not that we're at that point, but we might as well address this, we have an estimate here?
Yes, yeah.
So let's.
I would actually ask Mrs. Schaefer and Mr. Hebert, if you want to come forward and just share.
Water, any more water questions, chemistry?
We'll stand in the wings.
If you don't mind standing in the wings, don't leave the building yet. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Christina, do you want to start with the building layout?
Absolutely. So, and the maps you have in front of you, we went through every nook and cranny, made sure we had spaces for everybody, office spaces, et cetera. You'll see primarily K and 1 are on the first floor, and then the second floors, 2 and 3, with adjustments for, with office staff spaces, coaching spaces, special education spaces, and the specialists. There is only one, there's one special that would be in the classroom every other week. It would be guidance, which is not, with what we did before, we actually went back to the, we went to the complex. So guidance was in the classroom actually every week prior, and it would be every other week, would be the special in the classroom. And preschool obviously would be at the complex that was just mentioned, so I didn't mention again, but we did speak with the preschool team. And then actually, grade three actually went, because they haven't, some of them taught their way back, but they haven't been there any bit. So yesterday during PLC, we used some of the PLC time, we were actually there for an hour and 20 minutes yesterday. We were there till 20:04, they just wanted to check out all the spaces. So we checked out every room, every, where every special would be, they kind of got the lay of the land and figured that out, so. We have, and we had a staff meeting last week as well. So this, this map was shared with staff as well.
Scott, you want to share the moving?
Yes, so I reached out to two different companies, obviously have the quote from the first move we did, which was over $40,000 just from that moving company. The other moving company that I reached out to, RA Movers, they did our move for us last year. They were very efficient, very reasonable. They came in at 18, almost $19,000 for this move. I reached out to Isaacs Moving, the estimate came back at $31,000. Big difference, but I think it's because they prefer to use copy paper sized boxes versus, you know, 16 by 25. Yeah, well, even the ones we used the last move, various sizes. The copy paper boxes, obviously, they want us to purchase 600 of them. Whatever we don't use, they will reimburse us for, but I think that was a huge difference in price, was all the boxes. RA Movers figured about 400 to 500 boxes versus the 600 from Isaacs.
So which one's in front of us, the 18? What company is that?
RA Movers. We used them last year.
Do you, what was the total two years ago?
Robert Adams.
Forty, was it 42 years ago?
Yes.
And then the stipends were, I think it was just under 10, so I think the total was 50. I think the total all in was around 50,000.
We're not concerned that this is half of the price and we're going to end up.
And this 18, this is the one who moved the last year, you think?
We moved to eighth grade with this company.
And you said RA Movers?
Yes.
And they came out and looked at this building.
Yes.
What did we pay last year to move eighth grade?
Honestly, it was 17.
But that was grades four, five, and eight.
And stipends would be on top of this.
Yes.
Approximately 10 or more.
That's what we paid the last time.
So we, yeah, I had, I actually had a spreadsheet from last time when we moved from.
It was about 10.
Based on those hours, same rate.
So just under 30,000 is approximately.
Sorry, last year was 12,000.
For our grades four, five, and eight.
For the movers.
For the movers.
Can we just go back to this map for one second, to the first floor? With 113, 11?
So that, so we actually went yesterday, we are making, the grade three is going to be going upstairs. The special ed will swap, so.
So this first, I'm sorry, first floor, the three is actually special ed?
Yep, so that's going to be, it'll be another office space or classroom space, and then grade three is going to be up where it says.
Special ed.
Next, it's, so it's across, yeah, it's where it says OT, ELL. So that special, special ed will be downstairs right now, and then the ELL and OT will be there. be there.
And both moving companies said, as soon as we sign the contract, they'll drop off the boxes, the packing tape and whatnot. And they predict it'll take one week for the move. So well, well before July 1st, we'll move then. It will start on the 17th, right after school is dismissed at the complex.
So there is a plan ready for, whatever the committee is ready to do there.
Just one question. ELL and OT are together?
No, that's two separate rooms. Just when I was putting the little things electronically, they crossed over the line.
It's a weird, it's a weird room.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're small group rooms.
Secret doors.
The old computer lab too, we're gonna have to take the outlets out of the floor and replace the carpet, but we already have the carpeting to do it, so it's just a labor to do it.
ELL.
And a coat.
Yeah. I think we have a lot of...
Can I ask the question that was brought up during the forum about the kitchen? Is the kitchen ready to receive all of these kids if we were to move them back?
I'm gonna be working with the interim food service director and the kitchen manager. We're gonna walk that kitchen. There's a lot of equipment still in there. I don't know what, I know there's big mixing things. We're gonna go through that kitchen and make sure there isn't any equipment needs, and I'm sure there are equipment needs, but we'll be using the food service fund through approval with DESI to resupply that kitchen with all the equipment it needs. It's time for an upgrade anyways, and we have the funding through food service, not the general fund, won't hit our budget, to supply those, that equipment.
Joe, can I just add a piece, because our folks in the audience may not realize this, the food service budget is actually not at all connected to the district's operating budget. That's a separate budget that comes from reimbursements from both the federal government and the state. So all the equipment and supplies and resources, I think it was to Jean's, had mentioned it earlier tonight, like to Jean's point, we can actually replace that equipment with zero cost to the school district, it comes directly from the, the food service budget. So there's no additional expense to, to the district, to the towns, to the taxpayers, to anybody.
I know one of the previous, well, the previous food service director, we were looking at replacing the steamer already in that kitchen. So that was underway before she left, so there should be quotes and stuff out there somewhere.
This is, the replacement of the kitchen equipment's been ongoing, we've been doing it district-wide, year over year, to make sure everything is up to par for our kids, make sure we have everything we need. We've replaced kitchen equipment in a couple of buildings over the year that I've been here.
The walk-ins and the freezers have been running for the last two years, so there's no issues there, they're still up and running. I believe the ovens are still good. It's just the steamer.
And I, just, just again, to underscore the fact, you know, it's our job as the administration to make sure we're ready for whenever this decision is. So I just want to share that. We put these plans together so that at whatever point the decision is made, we're ready to do that. So I want to just rest assured of the community that whenever that decision is, is decided, the administration is ready to execute the plan, to move, to replace equipment, to do all the things that we need to do to make sure that all the students and staff have what they need.
I guess, I just don't like that the preschool doesn't fit. I, I don't like the idea that we have to have the fourth building still.
I have a question about that. Why wouldn't we move them to the high school now, if that's the intention of where they're going to be eventually? Why segregate them into that smaller, smaller community?
The space really isn't appropriate, I mean, we need bathroom toilets.
I mean, it is, it is different.
Would we have to retrofit the bathrooms for the little, I know it sounds silly, but like the little mini toilets?
And it's not worth doing that.
And they have to be in classrooms, right? Those bathrooms have to be in classrooms.
Yes. It's very temporary.
And an outside play space and...
Though, I just want to point out that that is where they used to be. I know a lot of people wouldn't remember that, but they were at, at the end of the band field, practice field, parking lot. That was their entrance, they had those rooms, and that, you know, that was their door, and that was their space years ago. It was a much smaller program, not, not what it is today. But it would alleviate some of the questions on nurse and principal, and, you know, they, they'd be in a fully up and running building. There's no bathrooms in the, is that where our...
Right now, our BICO program is in that.
BICO or are, are we adult? We're renting it out to BICO?
Upstairs.
Downstairs.
And downstairs is what?
Is our programs.
It is ours, okay. Is there a bathroom in there for them?
For our students, there is an adult bathroom.
Anything else?
We considered the transportation aspect of having all this change again. Have we reached out to Telstone and had those meetings?
Yeah, there would be little to no impact.
Apologies.
Yeah, you guys are talking to each other.
I might ask if the, the impact on transportation?
And I said there would be little to no impact on the transportation.
Because preschool's not trans...
Right, they would just, instead of dropping at the complex, they would just drop to MES.
And then it's still a staggered start time for people who have kids in the P, K through 3 versus pre-K?
Yes, so the times, the time changes wouldn't...
Preschool has a little bit of a later start.
Yes. So the times wouldn't change significantly.
I'd like to make a motion to hold off on making this decision.
Okay, you can make a motion on holding off, which is fine. Which is fine, but the, what I had...
Motion to table.
Actually, my motion would be to say no to moving the students for the school year.
Yeah, so, and so what...
That's a different motion.
So what Tara is recommending is that we hold off, so what we'll do is we'll keep it on the agenda. I'll keep it on the next agenda. I know, I personally, the town of Millville has presented from the, from, and I appreciate the hard work that went into getting us to this point, by Jennifer and Peter and the Millville Board of Selectmen, and it's been a heck of a two years getting to this point. And I do want, I mean, I think Mary Jude had put in writing that the exposure is ingesting and not, and not exterior, and that's, that's the regulators of the water in the state of Massachusetts. I also would, I, and any other member can, I would encourage them to share their concerns. The financial impacts, secondly, obviously, there's no exposure whatsoever. You know, Millville agrees to provide the water at no, zero exposure to the children, and, and the 850,000, and this is my third year in a row asking you for that, as well as the Kennedy Maloney Complex, although it's still being used as the district, and we have BICO in there, correct?
They're not there right now.
Not there right now, but, and so, because we're gonna have to have this conversation in Blackstone when that school is, if that school is vacant, and it's gonna be a bigger discussion as well with the district, because there'll be financial impacts to Blackstone if that school becomes completely vacant with the MSBA loans. So, but that's where, as far as the water goes, those are the things I'm concerned about is, and of course, hopefully getting that back from the state, hopefully before next Thursday. Anyway, just to, I'm confident they're gonna approve it, they approved the, they approved the actual, the grant applications with this information, this device on it, so I'm confident they're gonna approve it, but, you know, I'll get all the warm and fuzzy that it is approved and moving forward. And, Aaron?
Where do we stand as a committee on wanting the 180 days of results? We had already stood with that this year, and then they started unfortunately coming in negative in mid-winter. So now we're going to start fresh, new program, but it's, it is a pilot for the year. Are we going to ask ourselves to renege that as one of the, we were like, consistent water operator, 180 days of results, and a plan? We have the plan, and we have a consistent water operator. So I'm just throwing that out there. It has to be a year pilot. We've already voted a year ago on 180 days of results.
That's right, so, and I agreed to the 180 days, that's mimic a school year, when they were trying...
I think you actually made that.
I did, I did. And so when they were using the old technology of the filtration, the sand filters that they have in there now, and, and so, I have a great deal of confidence that it's gonna be overs, the oversight from the DEP, the, the five times a week, I think, of, of, of...
We haven't seen...
Physical testing, three to five times a week, where we were having maybe once a month?
Quarterly.
Any, yeah, so, and I would, if it was, if they were trying a new fix in our current filtration, you know, with, without this technology, I'd still be on the 180 days.
Same water, new filtration, Dan. Like, and then possibly a new one.
I understand that, not, the new filtration, yes, so what they were doing is adjusting the existing filtration that wasn't working, and creating more chemical issues and this and that. This is new filtration, so I'm, I'm confident, and Jane, Jane, go ahead.
So I just don't think we have all the information to make any decision this evening. So tabling the decision to the future or continuing future meetings is important.
Absolutely.
But I think we need the approval from the state to put the system in. I think we need at least test from the system. You know, we're saying it's gonna be all cleaned and sanitized, and let's, let's, you know, get those first three days or whatever of testing, but as importantly, we need to hear from MSBA, because if we're putting a town at risk to pay a bill they can't pay, there's some, there's issues there.
So with that, I'll jump to Carrie.
I just, if, we're so confident that this new technology is going to work, why the plan of also drilling a new well? What's the reason for that?
Well, I know many committee members encouraging to drill another well.
Right, but why is it not going down that path?
And so if you want, why, if you don't mind, why drill another well?
New water.
I think I know why.
I'll speak on that a little bit, Chris can correct me if I'm wrong. It's built into the million dollars, right? And we want to take advantage of all of the million dollars available. Also built into the million dollars is potentially improving the existing well, right? Dropping down the casing, because that's, could be a factor of these TOCs, and I don't know what else. So we may not even need to do a new well, but the money's there for it. And so the pilot study, I think your instincts are right, they, they're not gonna give a million dollars out on a, what is principally a pilot study, without planning to approve it, and now they're doing their, checking their boxes and whatever to come back with that approval. But I, I wouldn't bet against the approval. There's money in there for even two wells, because you, you drill a new well, you don't even know what you're gonna get, right? And you might have to do two, if in fact, we can't manage it with this pilot study or with this new technology, but I think, I'm, I'm sold on the new technology, and pretty sure, Chris is here as well.
They really, they really want to ensure that we have the right plan in place, so they want us looking at all the options. And like I said before, with that new source approval, that permitting takes, takes time, you know, the siting and the construction, so, so I think it's just, you know, working, reviewing both of these options. We're not gonna start drilling the well tomorrow, obviously, so it'll go through a review, and if, and this, and the treatment will be working simultaneously, so.
Treatment will be working on the existing well.
On the existing well.
Because the permitting for a new well could take close to the whole time of the actual, yeah, I'm sure they'll expedite it, seeing that they're...
Sure.
It's their, their grant that they're, they're using, but, right. And, and you'll, yeah, to touch on what Peter said, the existing well and the grant, I'm gonna, for lack of a better phrase, includes putting a sleeve or a lining in that, in that well to protect from the cracks and the infiltration.
But if that's $100,000, and why not just put that money into a new well and start totally fresh? You're spending some of that grant money that you might need at the end if this didn't work and that didn't work, and you might not have the money left to dig a new well.
No.
You have that money available to you right now to do all of it right, instead of, like, well, maybe this Band-Aid will work. It's a very old well with well-known problems, and essentially, you're throwing that grant money that's very hard to come by down the well, so.
Well, well.
Call it what I see.
So, but that, so that's another three years then, two or three years, if you...
If you can take a well in your backyard...
If you, yeah, you don't need the DEP to dig a well in your backyard.
It's a well contract, too. It's got a low flow, how many gallons per minute?
It flows up six gallons per minute.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know what the previous, there's been a, pounds of paper of exploration on that existing well, so.
I would say start fresh, don't even go through the paper.
The average permitting process for a public water well, year and a half, two years?
Yes.
Easy, yeah, so that, we wouldn't do any, we wouldn't do anything, that's what the suggestion is.
We'll start that process, right. As Peter indicated, you, you don't know what type of water quality, you're, you're gonna need treatment. I, I mean, our, our experiences in this area, most people probably have some sort of treatment on their well water, and you would need it on any well that you put in, depending upon the, the types of water quality that you come across, so.
And the approval of the grant includes the lining of the existing well, hooking up to the existing well, and potentially drilling a new well.
It'll be evaluating that well to determine if lining that well is, is the best option, and, and if not, then advance on the permitting of a new siting, so.
Lining of the well, you mean adding more casing?
They, they put a seal, they'll, they'll install a seal to try to isolate certain formation in there, to see if they could isolate a better water, water quality.
So there's casing that currently is above the surface and goes down 20, 30 feet into bedrock?
Yes, exactly.
And then there's, it's just in a rock formation after that?
Yes.
And you're going to go into that rock formation and try to line, line it?
Yeah, so there are different water bearing formations within that thousand-foot cylinder? Yeah, and they would, they could go, go in and isolate that with pneumatic packers, basically, and try and pump from those different areas of that well to see if, if all of those formations are creating this type of water quality, or one versus the other is, is influencing more than others.
Have other locations on site been considered for new wells?
We have the protective radius adjacent to that existing well, although it'd be somewhere, it'll be somewhere in that, in that, adjacent to that existing well.
I, my opinion is to, you know, let Millville solve the problem. When we first pulled our kids out of the school, we said, let Millville solve the problem, then we'll move them back in. And you're, seems like we're voting on something before they're done. We're just not ready yet, and, you know, short notice, I think the kids are doing fine where they are, you know, one more year, and let's talk to, so that we don't have repercussions with our loans. I'm sure, I heard you say it earlier, or someone, Erin, said that they were very, not, not hard on us about, you know, understanding. We still have the administration there, we're still utilizing it, so, that's my opinion.
Can I amend my motion that I started a few minutes ago?
There was a motion, I think you seconded it?
No, I didn't.
You didn't second it, oh, you explained it then, okay.
We stopped.
So there is no second on your motion, so your motion failed from a few seconds ago?
So let me amend what I was, my motion. I make a motion to not move the students to MES for the school year '25, '26, pending confirmation from MSBA that there is no clawback on the grant, since we have no test results with the requirement of 100 day, I'm sorry, with the requirement of 100 day, 180 days of test results in order to move them.
Second.
Can I see that?
Yeah, it's not fully what I said.
So, so the motion is seconded to not to move the kids back, pending contingent on the MSBA not to clawback on the... MSBA not to clawback on the loan?
Loan.
Okay.
The loan is on the boiler, just FYI.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And, you know, we have to realize that, you know, we're not putting money before the kids there either, right? We're just wanting to know what we're getting into. We don't want surprises, so.
Educated decision.
Yeah. Okay. It's a motion made by Tara, seconded by Carrie. Everybody clear on the motion, so it's not to move the kids back, contingent on hearing from MSBA. Peter?
Sorry.
It's a motion, I'll be into discussion, we've gone this far.
So if they come back and they say there is no clawback, or, I guess it's more, if they say there is clawback.
Yeah.
How does that impact what you're doing? You going to deal with that in a separate action?
Yes. Yeah, so it's contingent on.
You'd have to because her motion is no longer valid.
The vote would be void.
There you go, okay.
The vote would be void if there's a clawback.
Just clarifying.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that being said, if this is a favorable vote to not move the kids, I still would like Millville to come back with, Jen shaking her head, yes, yes, to, because I'd still like to see the updates and the progress. I know you'll probably, after this vote, you'll probably get a call, approval tomorrow or the next day. That's the way it's been working, so. The motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I thank everyone for contributing this evening and participating. I thank the residents, representatives of Millville Board of Select, and McClure, what's it, associates.
Sir, they are not moving?
They're not moving. You are.
Well, well.
For the time, well, temporarily, let me, yeah, it's just.
Until we hear from MSBA.
Not really. So theoretically, votes over that, if they say there is a clawback, we're going to say, okay, never mind, the kids are going there.
No, no, no.
We're keeping them.
We're going to come back and reconsider. We have to vote again.
Yeah, we have to vote again.
But not to move the kids back just because there's money involved.
We have to have the whole conversation locked in.
That's what the motion is.
Yes. I didn't make the motion. It was Tara.
That's what the motion is.
I also did have in there that 180 days of testing needs to be in file, so it is kind of a, yeah, moving part.
Is that in the motion?
Yes.
180 days? Because that's not what you said.
He didn't repeat that.
I didn't repeat the rest of it. I was clarifying the, the MSBA, what did I say? I don't, it's, it's recorded, thank God. School year pending confirmation that the MSBA does not, is not, does not clawback on the, on the boiler funding. So if the, if the MSBA claws back, all of this is null and void. We have to then revisit it.
And Tara also said 180 days.
And 180 days testing. But anything after the clawback, if they clawed it back, we have to revisit the whole vote.
Correct.
That's it. The whole vote is no good if MSBA chooses to say no.
If there's no clawback, it's 180 days anyways.
No, we have to revisit the whole vote.
No, if there's no clawback.
If there's no clawback.
My motion is to not.
Hopefully, they have so much progress by that time.
We'll reconsider. I'm sure, if you make progress, as to Jane's point, I'd be more than happy, come, if you guys are up and running in, in June or July, and you have several days of what you said, well, we can reconsider at any time. And someone, Wendy, is that you?
That's me.
Yeah?
I just have to say something because part of your responsibility is to create an environment for students that are safe and educate them. We are spending so much time on this water issue. I applaud all of the work that Millville has done. I've been on the school committee, I've watched it, I've waited for this moment. But in this moment right now, we need to go back to educating students and making sure that the students are educated and the staff are ready. There is 25 days left of school. If you revisit this, let's say next week, there's 20 days left for our staff members to get ready to move. So there's got to be something done. Either way, we can't keep putting it off. And then we, we need a new superintendent, no offense, but who's at the helm? So I know, I know the idea is a new well, and I applaud you, I think it's great, but in this moment in time, right now, we need to go back to educating students. And right now, we're not. We're talking about water. We're spending so much time talking about water. We need to educate in a safe place and allow the teachers to do what they need to do and do what's best. 25 days left of school. That's what they are contractually obligated to do. And we're going to revisit and revisit and ask them to come back in the summertime? I just want you to think about that for a minute. That's it.
So just for clarification, I asked them to come back and keep us updated.
So there's.
There was a question on whether or not reconsider. As a part of parliamentary procedure, at any time, on any item, the school committee can always bring it up for reconsideration. So, like, it could be done in November, you know, on the 180 days. So it was just, I was just responding to the question. I don't think we'll be reconsidering this next week or any time before the end of the school year. Thank you very much. Are we done for the time being with the water issue to Wendy's advice that we've spent too much time on it? I thank everyone for coming, speaking their piece on this. I thank you for the representatives of Millville, the residents, of course, and concerned citizens. Moving on, MSBA update.
Yes, a couple of, just a quick, oh, Tara, I'm sorry.
Oh, Tara.
Nope, go ahead.
Get another motion.
Follow?
No.
Two quick updates. In your packet, you have a copy of the, it's titled Educational Program, the 3.1.2, which is the MSBA framing. This is included, we did not include the whole 500-page document, but we thought it would be helpful if the committee was interested to see. This is the school district's portion of what we submitted to MSBA. So this was plugged into their overall 500-page document that came from the OPM and the architects. This really talks about our educational vision and plan and what we are looking to do moving forward with what we hope will be a redesigned space in some capacity, so what that might look like. To go deeper into that, on May 28th, we have a school building committee meeting at, I think it's 5:00 PM, Tara, is that right?
Yes.
Here. And we are going to invite the entire school committee for a couple of reasons. The first, we are going to look at the, kind of essentially, three main grade configurations. We're going to look at a 6 through 12 configuration, a 7 through 12, and an 8 through 12 configuration. The reason we're going to look at that and not necessarily look at the 9 through 12 is because we've done, like, we've done that, right? We certainly, I don't think the intent was ever to move the eighth graders back to the middle school at this point with the level of success that, that we have had with the transition. So when I say look at, very clearly, what I'm referring to is there is a process that MSBA has in place that outlines the cost, the square feet, and what the overall construction price could be for these various configurations. Obviously, it's a very high-level estimate, but we do need to start having those conversations already. And what do we want to put forward for a schematic design to MSBA? While the school building committee can make those decisions, and honestly, half of you now are on the school building committee, we wanted to invite the other half of the school committee who's not on that because it's such a significant conversation and such a significant decision, that we wanted to make sure that everybody was at the table. So the first meeting will be on May 28th, and we are going to schedule a second meeting that following Wednesday, just throwing some dates out, which is June 4th. A joint meeting with the school building committee and the school committee, if folks are available. We also can do, if you can't be in person, we can do a Zoom link or like a Google Hangout link so you can participate remotely as well. So we are thinking and hoping that within those two meetings, we can get to some type of a consensus on the grade configuration so that our architect, our architect, excuse me, can move forward and start putting together the schematic design plans that need to go into MSBA for August. And so we certainly don't want, you know, one kind of body making that decision. It really should be everybody at the table that, you know, has a consensus. So we'll start on the 28th with what the preliminary costs would be for those various grade configurations.
Jason, would you say the second date, the 4th?
Wednesday, June 4th.
And that would still be 5:00 PM?
Yes.
5:00 PM?
Yep.
Both of them?
Yep.
And we can do a virtual link for people that want to Zoom in or that can't be here. If necessary, we have a school committee meeting on June 12th. If we needed a third meeting, we could tag a meeting on to the beginning of that. Hopefully, we don't need that. Hopefully, we can have the discussions and get people to a place of comfort and consensus and decision on that grade alignment piece. Tara, did I miss anything?
No. Thank you. I have a question on this, if I can ask. And it only is just to update me, when I left the school committee previously, I thought the state was moving to a computer science requirement in the high schools. Did that not ever happen?
Not yet.
Okay. Because there's nothing in here about computer science. Or what I, what I read. I read quickly, but I did read, I did read it.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay. Do you think there will be a plan to include computer sciences?
Yes. Especially now.
Especially if it's like in the.
No, yes.
Conversation that it's going to become, right?
Correct. I mean, if we're looking what is coming.
Yep.
Yep.
So the other piece that's important, on this plan, this is part of the, it's called a PDP, which is a preliminary design proposal. So I just want to kind of underscore the preliminary piece. This, what you're looking at is not gospel. It's to give essentially an initial vision of what we're thinking we need to do with the space. So if there are things that are not included in here, we certainly did our best to include as many of the items as we could, but if there's something missing, we surely can add that.
Well, and we do say we want technology everywhere that the building touches, so I think you could add computer science.
Computer science should be, yeah.
Yep.
We'll make sure that they tell us that there's something special.
Right?
Thanks for that, Jane.
Good job.
And to that, and I have a meeting with the OPMs on Thursday, so I'll check in with them and see if we can make an amendment.
Okay.
For this now. They're still giving us feedback, so I'm sure we can make some.
Go here.
All right, Dan asked me to keep this moving, so the reorganization of school committee subcommittees. We have finance, capital planning, negotiations, policy, superintendent evaluation, and SIC Bank. Ted was a third member on SIC Bank and negotiations. So let's start with finance. We have Carrie, Tara, and Dan. Do you all want to stay? Do you want to be on that? You meet with Joe before each school committee meeting? We're all willing to stay?
Yep.
Capital planning is Carrie, Tara, and Chuck.
Oh, I don't even see that here.
Does anyone want to join that?
School building committee.
Oh.
Which one?
Capital planning.
It's the school building committee.
Right now, it's, yeah, the school building committee, basically.
So I already am on that.
I'm on that. I was on that.
You guys are both on that. All right, Erin and Jane. Chuck, you come to that, so we've got, we've got six of us representing. Carrie and I are both chair and vice chair. All right, so we've got a good representation there. Negotiations, we've got Matt, Dan slash Erin.
Who do we have, who are we negotiating with next year?
Me.
Me. Which is the superintendent, though, really? We don't, really, I'll stay on that.
I would like to do that.
You'll do that? Dan didn't say yes. Matt, did you want to stay? And we can question Dan when he returns.
We were missing Ted, too. He was there so far.
Yep. All right, policy committee, it's Matt, Tara S., and Erin. Everyone wants? Tara, can I join that one? You want to join? Yep.
I'll stay.
You'll stay? Stay?
Policy?
Yeah.
You want that?
Yeah.
Erin, did you want to stay?
Sure.
All right, so we've got Matt, Tara, Erin, Carrie, and Jane on policy. Superintendent Evaluation?
I'll join.
All right, we've got Tara joining.
I'll join also.
Chuck will join.
I'll join on that.
Erin, did you want to stay?
No.
No. Did you say that? You want superintendent?
Yes, I'll jump on that.
Jane, Carrie? Good.
Wendy, I nominate Wendy.
Wendy. You're in the room. SIC Bank, Carrie and Tara, Ted is no longer obviously here.
Oh, I could do, I.
You want to do that?
Yeah.
Anyone else? All right, we'll leave it Carrie, Tara, and Jane. Thanks, everybody. He said he'd be back, but he's not, so I'll keep moving to reappoint Long DePietro Gonzalez LLP as district legal counsel. Looking for a motion.
Still moved.
I'll second that.
Jane, seconded by Chuck.
Can we change that to Gonzalez, Long DePietro?
It's not the name of their company, but.
Put our preference there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And report of the superintendent.
Did we vote on that?
We need to vote. Oh, sorry. All in favor of reappointing Long DePietro Gonzalez LLP as district legal counsel?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now it's Jason's turn.
All right, thank you. So a few items on my report this evening. I'm going to ask Mary Colanino to join us. She is going to lead us in a conversation slash presentation around a few really important pieces of our work. We are going to have some discussion around our writing committee and our assessment structure for school year '25, '26. And really, it's kind of the Mary show because we're also going to talk about strategic plan, Mary. We're going to talk about summer programming, and then you're off the hook.
Okay.
Hello? Well, I'll start with the writing, the writing framework.
Oh, I'll bring this to you.
I don't have.
I have it, I'll bring it to you. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So that of this. So as you know, we started the, the writing assessment committee in the, in the fall, and I, I did present our timeline. So we did finish pretty much what we wanted to start. We started in January. We came up with protocols, we came up with, we aligned the standards, we looked at all of that. We looked at, we had the committee split into different, so the elementary school teachers, the middle school teachers, and then content teachers. They all met in, in different groups to look at best practices for, for their, for their grade level for writing instruction. And then we started to look at different writing support instructions for, for all of those grade levels. And then, so this is, so the assessments first, so I'm going to have to go back. So then we, we went down to, we, all of the teachers split into different groups, so they started to look at their content area. If you like, this is just an example of what they were looking at for, like, for grade seven. So the English teachers looked at what kind of writing and their writing expectations and the type of, types of writing that they were going to use, and the skills that they wanted to accomplish for that grade level and that content. Then the, the committee members then brought the, like, to the English PLCs and just, and had them look at what they had proposed. And they all contributed this as well. Science, same thing. And, and his, like, so for all of the grade levels. So I just gave you a little piece of what they've been doing. So then, next, the next thing that we'll be doing is next week, we'll be bringing all of those, all of that together, making sure that it's all aligned with the standards and, and what the PLCs and the principals have also all weighed in on this, too, and taken a look at all of the, all of the writing assessments. Now, there's many different writing assessments. We don't want to go, we're going to try to just work on a few at a time. So we'll be implementing some of those assessments, such as what a good science lab should look at, like, what, what a good persuasive essay should look like. Also, they'll be looking at how we can combine these writing assessments with other content. So if they're doing a persuasive essay in ELA, there's no reason why that can't be used also in social studies so that the kids are not, like, doing 50 million assessments. So, so we're going to be looking at that. And as I had told you in the fall, that this will be a two-year process. So after this, after we, we meet, we will be looking at going, we'll be implementing some of these, some of these assessments and then doing some walkthroughs with the principals, the coaches, and some of the committee members to see how it's working. And then looking at student work. We'll be looking at that in PLCs. Also, the committee will keep, will continue to meet. And we'll look at, we'll analyze and look at the data that we have and see what we need to change. And then hopefully by the spring, we'll have this all finished.
Mary, I just have a question.
Sure.
So you said that ELA goes and works together, and then science goes to work together. Is there ever a time where they come together collectively so it's cohesive?
Right, so the whole committee will do that. So that's what will happen next week. But right now, they've been working in their own content areas or, like, second grade has been working together, first grade. So, so that's how we've been doing it. So now we'll bring everybody together next week. And also, they, like, I, we have been working in PLCs as well. So it's not just specific grade level, like, in the content. So science has been working with science all through. And, and also the principals have been looking at all of this and, and, you know, really weighing in on what they think.
And it's great because it's a responsibility of all.
Right.
Writing isn't just in one specific class.
What's been really interesting is, you know,
I'm sorry.
Kids, like, a comment being made, oh, you know, kids, you know, they can't write a, a science lab and, you know, and, you know, a second or third grade teacher saying, yep, yep, they can because they are doing it. So it's been really, I think, eye-opening for a lot of the teachers just to see what's being done. And it's been, it's been a really good experience. It's a lot of work. They've been doing a lot of work.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Is there any way to see, maybe, I don't know how I say this, some examples of work of the writing pieces from each subject?
Oh, we will be. We will definitely. We'll be looking at student work. They'll, they'll be looking at it. We will be looking at student work.
Will you bring it to present to us?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's a great, that's a great idea. Yeah, we will.
And this writing will become part of our beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year.
Right.
So not only do we talk about right now, which I know you're going to get into assessment, the current assessment system we're using, writing will be a part of that. So, you know, we had our kiddos come and share. They'll come and share for us. And it's something we can definitely share, the work that we've been doing.
Writing's been a, I mean, this is an issue that we know that is throughout the country. So, but it has been, it's amazing just the work that's been done so far, especially, you know, when I look at the younger grades, like, how they'll look at their own work and want to revise it. So this is, you know, this is ongoing and, but it's been, it's been a good experience and for all the teachers. And, and I, I really appreciate all the work that they've done for this. It's been a lot of work this year. Any other questions? All right, so I'll go on to assessment. So now I have to, sorry about that. So when we started this in the fall, I had come to you and told you that STAR was something that the teachers wanted to revisit. So we looked at, we started with, just with math. And we decided that we would put together the assessments that were in the content, in their, in their curriculum. So with, with, with the, with the elementary, we used the HMH growth measure. And then with, with the high school, we used the SABSS. And also, the math teachers met, a lot of them met the committee and some of the other math teachers met in the summertime and came up with quarterly assessments. They felt that that was something that they really needed, that a lot of kids were coming back from college saying that they really felt that, that they needed to have more exams, like, like final exams. And so we decided to do quarterly ones instead of midterm and final exams. So this was a pilot. We decided that we would keep the ELA just, and then we would look at the math. And we found that we weren't getting enough, it wasn't, we weren't getting enough data. So what happened, we revised, we, we came together again as, with the assessment committee. And we just felt that the way, we didn't have enough, enough depth in our data. So, but we did feel that there was some really good things that happened as well. The, they want to keep the, the quarterly exams. And ELA is also going to be implementing that and eventually the rest of the subjects. But also, they came up with three writing assessments. That's going to continue K to 12. So that, that is another thing that will stay. So, but what we've decided is that we, we looked at the needs that we needed. We needed a consistent benchmark, and we weren't getting it for assessment. So we went, we decided to go back to some of the programs that we had looked at before. And we have decided on, we're looking at two right now. And right now, some of the teachers, the principals, the committee is looking at two of these assessments. And we will vote on that next week as a, as a committee. So we will look at it, and then I'll be back again at some point to tell you what we're doing. Any questions on that?
The two we're looking at are I Ready and MAFS.
I Ready and NWEA MAFS. They're similar, but one gives us more data that we think that we can look at in the moment, like, on skills that the, that the students will need. But we're still looking.
And that will help us, Mary, for the intervention, for also moving kids forward.
It will. Right.
Have skills.
Yes.
So I Ready will show you the results, but, and then it will link the standards to certain, like, targeted activities for these particular skills that kids can use during their intervention.
And both of them are aligned to, to MATHS, to MATHS standards and to, they're very similar to MCAS. So that, that's a good thing.
So I just have a question. Back to the high school quarterly exams.
Right.
And you mentioned that you were hearing that kids are saying they needed more because they weren't ready. So was there any, anything that looked into going back to the midterms and the finals for exam weeks and that prep for our kids?
It's, there's, that's a good question. And right now, the math department at the high school feels that quarterly exams are better. So, but it is something that we could revisit.
Yeah, we did have some conversations with them at the high school. But what we don't want to do is go back to the traditional exam week where you come in for your tests and go home.
Why?
It's a huge waste of time.
Yeah.
The kids, they lose out on days and days of instruction. So what the teachers are proposing instead is they come in, they take their exams. They do their exams, and they space the exams out on a particular schedule. But then they, you know, they stay in school and they go to the rest of their classes and things.
But as far as prep for what is ahead of them in the four years, there's nothing we're doing that's giving them that, that prep for the college semester, the finals week.
No, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that at all. I, this, this structure does that. Why do they have to go home? Like, why do they come in and take two tests and then go home?
Are you saying more of the, throwing them all in one week where it's all?
There's no taking a test.
Or are you saying? I'm not saying they have to go home. But there's
Yeah, that's right.
Just that, wrapping up.
It's still the same exam.
Oh, so you just mean from semester to semester instead of quarter to quarter? So that would be a midterm and a final.
I'm saying, you, you specifically mentioned that you were, kids felt that they weren't ready for that.
Right.
What we're doing is not preparing them for, for what they're exposed to in first and second semesters of college.
A midterm is half a year. Quarterly is not as much material.
But even the way they prepare for it and what it encompasses.
Those students, that they have, what was their prior high school experience?
There's nothing.
There were quarterly exams, so they've gone to quarterly exams.
But they said they needed more.
Right, so we went.
More than quarterly?
No, no, this, so they've implemented quarterly exams.
Was that just this year, though?
Yes.
That's just this year. So those kids aren't in college yet, Chuck?
Nothing.
You know, I, I think it depends on what the exam encompasses. So you can do a quarterly exam and test on just that, like, the, the fourth quarter.
Right.
Test on just the fourth quarter, which many colleges do.
Yes.
Or you can do a test on the whole year, which MCAS and does. So I think you can do quarterly and they'll get that experience, but it's based on what are you testing for.
Even the pressure of preparing for it is, I'm really not, I'm just saying, like, watching my older kids go through it in the last few years, it's, it is very different. That's what I'm saying. The preparing of it, what it is, and even the weight of that grade. So this year, we went to quarterly.
Right.
All of our kids that left last year and were here probably, I think it was, it's at least a good four years that we weren't doing it.
Right.
So that group of high school kids, unfortunately.
Never experienced an exam until they got to college.
Yeah. So maybe we'll get new feedback in the future.
Right.
But, and input COVID into the middle of it.
Yeah.
They, they definitely weren't.
But the kids have had lots and lots of exams. They've never not experienced an exam. It may not be the traditional, like.
Thinking it's exam week.
Yes, like, that, that pressure, the buildup to it.
You're saying it's a good thing?
To go back to it. I'm, no, I'm not saying it's a good thing they didn't have it. They were.
No, no, you're saying it's a good thing they do have it.
I think everyone's
I think we need to do a little more.
It's a positive thing.
I think we need to do a little more. Even starting maybe simple syllabus at the beginning. I know some teachers do it.
Yes.
But even understanding, like, that your syllabus at the beginning of your quarter, we do quarters, and the, and the weight of each grade, there, there are some kids that have never seen that. And, and I'm not saying it's our school, I'm just saying there are simple things, simple, other things that can be changed to prepare them for that whole culture shock of college.
I have a question. Either Mary or Jason can answer this. How does this play into the, what we've been trying to figure out for graduation requirements? So how is that, like, does this play into that? Or is this completely?
When we started this, it was before they got rid of the MCAS. So that has it actually, that's a
I think there's a, I think there's a piece where this could fit into that.
The tail, yeah. It seems like, it seems like it's, it's preparing to be that, but.
And kind of what Erin's talking about, too. There may be a different exam structure that we put in place.
Right.
That'll meet what you're, what you're talking about, Erin. And also, how do we build that into what the requirements are for graduation? What do those exams look like? What, you know, we have, we obviously have the passing requirements and things for each course. But, you know, to what extent do those midterms and finals count toward that final exam for that course and that kind of thing?
So this year, math did, had the quarterly exams next year, ELA. And I'm, and so far, what I've heard, social studies and science are right up there as well, so.
I'm, I just want to reiterate, I'm not saying they have to go home. I'm just saying that they need to have that buildup to the pressure of exam week. You know, if we have two a day and then they finish their day, I, I don't know.
I think it also needs to be said, I mean, they still have MCAS, and they're still spending a lot of time on MCAS.
They had them when we had exams before, too.
Exactly, but it's still, it, so to have, I mean, now they have exams.
And they'll be going back to this assessment as well.
There's a lot, a lot of testing. Is there enough time to teach them?
The instant gratification of a grade on the MCAS. By the time we're talking about, to those kids about their MCAS score, they're in a new grade and new curriculum, you know?
I, I agree with you on the lack of lead for MCAS at all.
They're getting their grade almost instantly now. Within 24 hours.
Before they even walk out of the room sometimes.
It's very quick.
Well, the good thing about these assessments, for example, if we bring on, like, an I Ready or if we do the quarterly exams or the essays, they're going to get that instant feedback.
They'll get them right away.
Yeah.
They will. They'll get them right away, and they'll also get this, they'll get the help with the skills that they need right away. It'll be more personalized.
It's much more effective than
Yes.
Than an MCAS or a standardized test. Well, not, less STAR. I mean, STAR seems to be pretty immediate.
Okay. So next, the blueprint. Oh, I guess it's summer. So for summer, our summer program, this year, our summer program is going to be one month. So even our, so the credit recovery for the high school as well as the middle school will be from July 8th to the 31st. We will, we will be, July 7th for them for the 31st, the 8th for the, for the elementary schools. Monday through Thursday, the enrichment program and the credit recovery program will be at the high school. And the 21st century learning will be at the middle school. And we will have the elementary math and literacy enrichment also at, at the complex. The extended school year will be at the complex as well. And this year, we have a new ELL teacher that will be at MES. And we will be giving language acquisition classes to those kids for, for one month. So they'll be going four days a week for one month, which will be really great. We also have our wraparound services and our athletic clinics. And also this year, we're going to start something new, which is, I think is really wonderful, is virtual summer read aloud, where teachers will record their favorite, they'll record themselves reading their favorite stories. And we will, we will put that out once a week for, for five weeks, five or six weeks, depending on how many teachers we get.
Where will you put that out? Where will it go out?
It will go out, I, I would think, like, a YouTube video so that they can.
So like, in an email or is it going to be found on the district website?
All of it.
I would say both, all of the above.
So it's going to go everywhere?
Right. And teacher, and it will go out in the newsletters before a school ends. So it will be, I think it'll be really great. I know that some of the teachers did this in, at MES and at the complex before, during COVID. And it was really, really popular. So I think that it will be, it'll be nice for the kids and for the parents if they want to listen as well.
And this whole schedule, will this be on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be all on the website.
No, these are good, yes, I'm, this is great.
They're always good questions.
Just add the building, I guess, to them.
So now our, I, I don't think it's in the packet. So your blue, the blueprint is in your, in your
It's not in their packet, Mary.
It's in your packet, sorry. Carrie and Tara can hear this one more time. So we started our, our blueprint in the fall to redo the, with the district leadership. And we, we believed that the next step that is to go deeper, instead of, we looked at our four goals and decided that the goals would remain, but we would go deeper with these goals. And to, to really try to meet them. And as you can see, all of them are connected right to, to our blueprint. And we designed it. And at the time, we made the decision just to deepen our focus on those, on those goals. After that, in the winter, during the wintertime, around February, the principals brought the, our draft to each ILT in their schools. And they, they put, added their input, their feedback on what they thought the blueprint should look like. And then they presented it to student leadership, some of the students. Also added their, their input and then to the parent councils. And then with you, I presented this again with you. And then recently, Jill and I met last week with the community. And then recently Jill and I met last week with the community and Tara and Carrie were both there. And we received a lot of valuable feedback on what they thought the next steps should be. So we'll take all of that information that we've gotten. And we will use that information to develop our action steps in, in August. And then that will move our, our work forward. And then that will be our roadmap to our new blueprint.
And just to remind you to everyone, I don't know if you have a new packet, but remember our areas of curriculum instruction, the whole child and the community. Again, keeping those topic areas, but again, we took a, a little bit of a deeper dive.
Yes.
What's on here is action required, but we don't have a copy of it.
Right.
It was in the last packet, but it didn't get into this one, Mary.
I'm sorry.
So we can bring it, we can bring it back on the 22nd for approval. Alright, thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Summer and fall athletics overview. Darling, if you want to join us.
Mind if I give a brief update for spring as well?
That's great.
So today we had the D V C championships for high school track. We'll have the D V C championships for middle school track on Thursday. Though we already got the results for D V Cs, so the boys team placed fifth, the girls team placed fourth. And then we had numerous individuals who placed in the top in their event. So Camille Wetherell placed first in the long jump. In the women's 100 meter, Natalia Marias placed second, Camille Wetherell placed third. In the boys 400, Ryan James placed second. In the boys 4x100, Beemar placed third. In the girls 4x100, the girls placed second. In the 4x400, the boys placed second. In triple jump, Ryan James placed first, Aiden Trescott placed fourth. And then in the women's jav, Javelin Natalia Marias placed first and Jackson Dutton placed first. We do have a few more meets for the season. And then one more upcoming spring event, we'll have athlete signing day. So for any athlete who committed to a college in athletics, they will be recognized this Thursday morning during the school day with their family members.
What time is that, darling, in case people want to attend?
8:00 AM. I'm actually a good pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, darling.
So the first page of this packet is my tentative plan for summer programming for athletics. I'm still working with certain captains to figure out when they're going to hold captains practices. In the morning, Monday through Thursdays, we're going to have open strength and conditioning from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. They did the same thing last year and that timing worked pretty well. Again, this is open to any sports team, even if like soccer player, cheerleader, anyone wants to go. The coaches that are in there can give them a specific workout catered to their sport. Then we, from 12 to 2, those were my planned sessions for like when kids get out of the enrichment programs. So it was just open session for anyone to play soccer, volleyball, basketball, tennis. Cheer is planning on having captains practices. Girls soccer and girls field hockey plan having captains practices as well. There's also going to be one to two football camps. So from July 14th to July 18th, our high school football coach will be holding a youth football camp for grades four through eight. And then as it gets closer to the fall, we may have a high school specific football camp as well. Last year, the D V C teams participated in like a D V C specific football camp. So we're looking at different possibilities for that. And then on August 15th, that's when football can officially start practicing. And then the following Monday is when the rest of the fall teams can start practicing. The next page is the fall schedule so far. So for football, our, our football schedules is finalized except for our Thanksgiving game. Sutton is no longer having a team or they're joining a co-op, so we lost them for Thanksgiving. We have a few schools interested, but we're trying to find the best option for us. Right now Oakmont and Cathedral are interested, but they're not the best option for us. So we're kind of holding off a little bit longer to see what we can get.
I mean, you're coordinating that with the coach?
Yes, definitely. And most of these schedules, at least the league schedule, is for two years, especially for football. So we want to make sure like the opponent we find for Thanksgiving is someone we want long-term. For boys varsity soccer, we can have a maximum of 18 games, so we need four more games for that. For girls varsity soccer, again, maximum of 18, we have fi, we need five more games. For varsity field hockey, we need three more games. And for varsity volleyball, we need 10 more games. They have the most games, they can have 20 games. And then for JV and middle school teams, that's really up in the air. Like I can schedule them, but they may shift a lot by the time August comes because that's when everyone's going to know their numbers, know how many people they have and know if they're going to do mid-level waivers. So we can plan on games, but that will shift a lot over the summer and up until the first week of, of fall season.
Question. Yes. Tryouts, did you set a time slot for your tryouts?
So tryouts, I'm hoping to do the same thing I did for spring where it was like, the first day of tryouts, we don't actually have tryouts. So I require every coach to meet with me in person. That way everyone planned on being present that day and we can get through like all the expectations and guidelines.
Can I make a suggestion for that? I'm sorry. Can we do the coach thing? I think we should start the tryouts with what M I A A recommends. So I would, I would make a suggestion that we do the coach thing before that.
Okay.
So it doesn't take away any tryout days.
So I could probably do it right before football starts. That way we're catching everyone before practices start. So probably Thursday, the August 14th would be my coaches meeting. And then tryouts, I'll work with coaches for most fall sports, they can begin tryouts on August 18th. So it'll probably be like the first few days of that week. I do have fall, fall registration open as well, so people can start registering for that. That will help us plan for which teams we're going to have in terms of JV, middle school in the fall.
Can I ask a question? Do you still hold the, the preseason parent information night?
Yeah, I've kind of been trying to adjust it as I go to find what's working best. We didn't have a good turnout in person. I'm open to suggestions, but I did have in-person preseason meetings with students, like during charger time during the school day. And then a virtual parents one. I felt like the virtual one could get more attendance, but I'm happy to do both an in-person and a virtual one.
The virtual one had, we had like 30 people for the spring sport.
Yeah, I felt like it was a better turnout.
Which was more than we had when it was in person.
I do think it's beneficial having it separate from parents and students because I can be like very specific on what the expectations are for students and what the expectations are for parents and what things they need to know.
How did the charger time one go for you as far as like scheduling and getting the kids to attend it? Was that?
It was a little chaotic just because there was like a last minute, like senior meeting that week. So it was supposed to be in the auditorium and it got moved to the cafeteria, so that was a little chaotic. So I think it can be planned a little bit better for fall, for sure. And it doesn't have to be during the school day. I just feel like you can get, catch the most students.
They're captive audience at that point.
Yeah, they have to be there.
At fall spots, you won't be able to do that.
Well, in, in the past, it's been.
Before the school year ends, right?
It's been a weeknight in the summer. And everyone came to the auditorium in the first, first fall sports. And I specifically remember it because it was usually during band camp week, so you'd see them going in. But it brought everyone in the room, into the room, including the coaches who were there. So I was just going to recommend, if that, if you're, if you're running it that way, which it doesn't sound like you are, but that's when you would have all your coaches together.
Yes.
If you were holding that. I think it used to be mandatory too, because there was concussion protocols that the kid, that had to be signed off on.
Yep.
And do they still have to hand in medical forms and stuff?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And for like for spring, since we didn't do an in-person one, we had like a meet the coaches night that was completely separate. Again, I'm still trying to figure out like what works best for everyone. But the meet the coaches night, I felt like gave coaches the opportunity to be more prepared and have like a bigger presentation. Like the softball coaches had a whole screen with them and a PowerPoint and all these forms for them to sign out.
Well, even the cohesiveness, I know I wasn't at the last meeting, but the schedule's handed out, parents and kids are there. You know, so everyone has the same information. But if you're breaking it up into virtual, you're not able to hand them the.
Yeah.
The tough thing is just getting the attendance of.
Yeah, I'm, and I'm willing to try different options and doing it multiple times if that helps. I think I'm just still trying to figure out the best, the best option for it.
Can it be contingent upon them starting, like mandatory?
It used to be, but and I'm, but when I'm.
All that stuff before they get going.
I'm speaking of pre-COVID too, I mean.
Yeah, since COVID.
Then they, they broke up into sport, like the basketball kids would go into the gym and, but at first you started with the athletic director, everyone in the gym, in the auditorium.
In first spring, we had the, the student one, that was required. So everyone got checked off by me, so if they didn't check in with me, they couldn't, they wouldn't be cleared to go to their sports until they checked in with me.
And that was, you checked, like when they checked in with you, you went over there, physical and their.
Physically with me, so then I say physical, everything, grades, age, everything gets checked off, just, so I have them in person.
And you grabbed a few, I know, because mine was one of them.
So I can go to, I have a winter schedule too, I can go over if there aren't any other questions about fall. Winter schedule right now, the focus is on basketball. The league schedule just came out for basketball, so now this is like the big push to get the teams that we want before they're scooped up by everyone else. So.
Games, is it for basketball? Is it?
Maximum is 20, but we plan, I spoke to both coaches already, they plan on making the Clark tournament. They both made the Clark tournament last year, which means we have to be checking 18 games. Yep, 18 games and then you leave two games to be announced in the schedule for the Clark tournament. So we need five more games for varsity boys basketball and 10 more games for girls varsity basketball. We have some verbal agreements in place for schools that are not on here, we just don't have a date yet. And this is of course working closely with both varsity basketball coaches. They're choosing who they want their opponents and then I just work on figuring out a date that works for everyone.
That's good, that's important.
Yes.
Can I ask a question for everyone who might not know? There's no more D V C. So when you say our like league opponents, that's completely different now.
Yes, and it's, it's based on power rankings and we have those power rankings for two years. So we have much better opponents this upcoming year than we ever have before in the D V C. So it, it will go a lot better. Our kids won't get as discouraged playing these teams that are ranked way above us.
And our league per se changes like based on sport?
Every two years. Yeah, so we have like a sub grouping. It's not, it's not considered a conference or a league, but within the huge C Mac league, we have sub groupings of like anywhere from four to six teams that we play two games against for each team. And then we can choose our own opponents.
Basketball could play, could be in a league with different.
Completely different.
Yeah, different boys and girls.
Yes.
Yep, they don't have it the same for boys and girls basketball.
It's now based on your power rankings, which is kind of sad because. Even though when you look at the girls basketball, we have a lot of the same opponents that we've had before.
Yeah, well, and there's like a sort of an agreement amongst the D V C, D V C athletic directors. We still do want to keep the condition of playing those games, so we're all in agreement, like we at least want one game each year.
Well, it's good for our transportation.
Yes. Yeah, and you'll see some sports, it may have a higher transportation cost, it just really depends on the power rankings that two-year period.
And is this year one or this year two?
Incoming fall is year one.
Year one.
Yep. And then in terms of C Mac too, we're just in the planning phase of everything still, so we have various committees. We're still making the handbook for the C Mac. I'm on the rules planning committee and the all-star planning committee. And then tomorrow we meet as a group of C Mac athletic directors and review what all the committees have been working on. It's a very lengthy process that will go on all summer, just to make sure we're all in agreement. But it seems to be going in the right direction.
And what is C Mac?
Central Massachusetts Athletic Conference.
So I know you said the focus was on basketball, but I think something important that we need to talk about is our cheerleaders. Because of the way things ended last year.
Yeah.
Is the plan to have two.
Yes.
Coaches, middle school, high, middle school varsity?
Yes, in my budget proposal in whatever month that was, I recommended a middle school coach position that had a stipend and a high school coach position. So they shouldn't, it shouldn't be like interfering with each other, it would be two separate coaches.
So I think we need to approve that as a committee and tell me if I missed that meeting. But we, when there's a new sport, a new group, like we had to approve middle school baseball a few years ago. Because we, and we didn't carry a JV team. But I believe we need to, as a committee.
Even though we approved the budget for it.
Can have the money, but we have to approve it being middle school. We never had one before last year. I, I didn't know where it came from. Not the, no, we have to approve the.
Position?
The sport. We're always flexible though, based on numbers, whether we call it a JV or a middle school.
But Tara, remember the year we went backwards to middle school baseball, or I believe.
I wasn't on the committee when I helped with the information.
You guys came and proposed it, we had to vote on it being middle school, not JV. So with that being said, I've wondered this past year how we got to where we were. We have cheerleading, but we never had a middle school team before. And then, and this year they were kind of encompassed under that one coach. But I, I just, I believe there's something where we have to.
But we had a JV cheer team before.
Yeah, that was. Not competitive.
We had a JV team.
Not competitive. We had, we had fall for football.
Yep.
And this year we went competitive in the fall as well too.
Yep, yes.
That was, we only had varsity competitive cheer. It, this year it kind of evolved. I don't know if it was the coach that recommended it or tried to start as a club first and then brought it out. But we've never had middle school, middle school competitive cheerleading team or JV.
In the winter, they had JV and varsity, in the fall they didn't. And in the beginning of the fall, the cheer coach myself met with the principals and said, hey, we want to have middle school comp, compete in the fall and have varsity compete in the fall. And we, we figured out how to make it work.
We only had one comp team.
We had two in the fall.
This year. When, and I'm talking about in the winter, we never had more than one cheerleading team. And, and what they did was the, the, the team was a little bigger for the basketball games.
Yes.
But not all of them were on the competitive team.
Correct.
And there was only one competitive schedule, it was varsity. There was never a separation.
But as far as sideline cheer and competitive cheer, that happened this year too.
Some of the girls together.
Some, some did both, but not all of them did.
Oh yeah, all of a sudden there were middle school games too. We never had that before. Middle school cheer.
But we had JV cheer.
No.
At basketball, no?
No. It was one. So I just believe there's something that we have to do as a committee to approve that team or sport or. I know the stipend was approved as part of the budget, but.
Other towns around us have middle school cheerleaders.
I don't know, I don't know who they competed with.
Against somebody, right?
We didn't, we never, so you kind of created that schedule, right, this year?
So the cheer coach, the cheer, it's same with other sports, like the cheer coach will decide what competition she wants to enter into. And then we register them, there's usually middle school specific competitions and high school is usually us. And then, uh, we register them. There's usually middle school specific competitions and high school is usually a separate, complete schedule.
But we are going to run it as two programs this year, right? Just so the girls, separate practices, just from the, when those girls came to our meeting and we were brought, made aware of a few things.
But the positions have already been posted and like
We have two really good cheer candidates that apply to the
We're approving that, like we have to approve of, I know you're saying we approved the stipend for it, but we have to say we're going to have a competitive middle school.
Can I make a motion for it to go on the agenda for Clarissa?
No, just out of an abundance of caution, I'll take a motion to approve a middle school cheer competition.
So moved.
Second.
Whoa, hold on, can we put a caveat on that, that it's middle school or JV based on the numbers registered?
Well, but we're letting the fourth graders, were the fourth graders part of that this year?
No.
Oh, that was a question, sorry. I didn't know they were.
But will competitions be different for middle school versus JV?
Usually unless there's like a high school one that has a middle school section, but that could be up to the discretion of both coaches and if they want to attend the same one or not.
Well, JV, we're not going to have a JV team. We're going to have a middle school team.
Correct.
Is that different? What, right, is that what your question is?
Carrie's saying or.
Middle school is different than JV.
But we typically with all our sports.
Yeah, so the motion in the second is to create both.
Depending on the numbers, so we're covered whichever way.
And so we can create both at the discretion of the, at the administration and the athletic director.
So can we end up with three? Wait a minute, are you saying we can have three?
No, he means either or.
Either or.
Either or, depending on
We're opening it up, just, it's just cleaning up any housekeeping, just in case we need to make that.
Baseball or softball, we just did the same. We either had a JV or a middle school team.
We wait to see the registration numbers and the grades to decide. It's just going to be, and sometimes they are labeled like a middle school JV team where they'll play both. They'll play some middle school teams and some JV teams because it benefits the kids.
And it depends too, like if we submit a middle level waiver and it doesn't get approved, that also determines which way we're going, JV or middle school. So it does switch, it could switch year to year. But as long as it's approved, that we have two cheer teams, like two distinct cheer teams. I think that's what's important.
Mr. Chair, the motion was to approve a JV or middle school team
Yes.
For cheer for the
Based on the registration.
Based on the registry.
Yep.
And it's the second?
And we have a second.
And we've already approved a stipend.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Also in the budget, there was like an increase, um, for supplies for cheer, just to cover the additional competitions and stuff, so
Which it just shows you even more that we never had it before. It was not, I, I was in the middle of the year when some of the issues started coming up. I was like, do we have a middle school?
It was more of a cheer. That's great. It's growing.
Yeah.
That's a good club.
Yeah.
That's all a good thing.
Club, yeah. I thought that's what I thought.
Yeah.
It got legs somehow.
It got legs, yeah.
Any other questions?
Um, so question is, when will you have cheer information? Because it's not on here.
So we have to hire a cheer coach because I don't want to make any plans for the schedule without input from them.
We do already have all of these, the boys varsity and JV, or you, I thought you made the schedules.
I, I make the schedule in conjunction with the coaches. So for basketball, we're of course assuming right now that we're continuing with our boys varsity basketball coach, girls varsity basketball coach for fall. Um, I've consulted with every coach from fall in their postseason meeting. So we haven't moved forward with anyone for fall yet, but this is all checking with games with the current coaches from this past year. Just cheers, a different situation, so I can't really consult with anyone. Um, so I'll wait for the new coaches to be appointed.
And then middle school basketball, boys and girls?
Yes, that, um, I, I still can consult the coaches from this past season. That's just more, we don't know what teams have middle school yet.
The middle school schedule usually kind of filters from the varsity JV schedule.
So usually will match as much as possible. So if we're playing Sutton, we'll try and play Sutton JV and Sutton Middle School all the same day.
I'm sorry. I was catching up on something, so I did miss the, are we good?
We're good. We're good.
All right, no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Darlene.
Yes.
No, we are passing over that.
The coach for Hope Dale, uh, they have a high bar that we purchased.
For, um, high jump?
Yes. We need to get it back.
Okay. Was it, do you know if it was donated when the
Joe, wasn't it a mat?
Dig up the, um, a receipt that we paid for a couple of years ago for the track equipment. So we had two high jump bars. They probably paid three or $400 for it.
When did, when was it purchased?
That would have been, um,
Two thousand and
Yeah, it was maybe three, was it three summers ago? Something like that. Oh, no, wait, this was when we did it at the end of the year. It was the track equipment, yeah. Was that
Two summers ago?
Three, yeah, maybe.
I think it was two.
It was after COVID.
After COVID?
Yes. It wasn't, so it wasn't nineteen?
No, it was after COVID, yeah.
Twenty-one? Maybe twenty-one. Twenty-two, something like that.
Yeah.
Do you know what company? Because I could also reach out to the company.
But how did Hope Dale get it? Did we let them borrow it? I'm confused.
So an old coach gave away our old high jump pits with standards and a bar. And, and he did not get permission from the school board to do it. And that bar, it's a high, you know, special bar for the high jump. For some reason, we got two, we bought two. And I know we have one out at the track and one is missing. And I'm assuming that we gave it to Hope Dale. I just, we need, I saw the coach today, but I didn't remember to ask him.
Okay, no problem. I can contact the company too, because they look up, when I was looking for high jump materials, they look up what our past order was too.
Wasn't there a mat too?
It was like a $50,000 expenditure.
Yeah, it was a big Wasn't there a mat that you were looking for too?
The old mats.
Did we get it back? Oh.
So we bought new mats. The, the other ones were old. I don't know how old they were, but
I thought you were looking for one that we let someone borrow too.
We should have them back, the old mats that Hope Dale took from us. We should have them in our own school that the kids can, you know, we have a set out in the, on the track and
Was it like a little coach side deal thing?
Can you get the mats back, Darlene, too? Can you just get our stuff back? Does Hope Dale know that we need
They might not know. It might have been coach to coach.
Before, but we just have an act on it.
Possessions, nine, ten.
We do have to, usually the committee approves the
Yeah.
Surplus, yeah.
Surplus material.
Done by a previous track coach.
Enough to say, we, we let you borrow this.
Yeah, just a bad coach call.
Now we need it back.
And if you don't mind when you
It was never approved for long-term.
That bar, you know, at three or $400 and just
You've lost it. You're not losing it. You've lost it.
I have an old, there's an old junky one in there that's duct taped on it.
I can have that one.
Send the new one back.
Darling, when you reach out to Hope Dale, um, could you see where they buy their pencils in bulk?
Maybe a motion that Chuck go pick up this stuff from Hope Dale. He knows what he wants.
At one o'clock in the morning, under the dark of night, dressed all in black.
Pick up the high mats.
With Chuck. In a ski mask.
Consider it done. I thought we already had them back. I didn't realize that we had to get them back. You've been asking for it for like, I feel like years. I'm sorry, we don't have them back yet. We will get them.
Well, that explains.
Just go take them, Scott.
That explains what the magic club does.
Bring Chuck with you. He knows what he's looking for.
Enough. Okay, we have to move on. Thank you, Tara.
Point of order.
Where'd it go?
Moving on.
Athletic trainer job description.
Uh, we're going to pass over that to five twenty-two at the request of the superintendent. Does that sound right? Thank you very much. Moving on to the business office, Joe.
I can wake up now. Uh, budget journal entries. What you have before you is, as you can tell, uh, seven pages of journal entries here. Which is, it's starting, ninety percent of what's on here are journal entries that are used to get us prepared for FLY twenty-six purchases. When the purchases are put through, some of the lines don't have enough funding in them, so I'm just moving the money to balance out that funding. So I've highlighted two that aren't related to that, are not, I should say. On page four, journal entry one, I got the last one, I guess, I still can't see, one sixty-eight. Um, that was, the high school had remaining funds in several lines. They asked if they could take those remaining funds, consolidate them into one line, so they could do one final purchase for the year. So that's all that's representing. And then on page five, I have one seventy-five. That was just to, I moved the, uh, travel stipends out of the incorrect, uh, funding, uh, function code into the proper function code. I neglected to move the Medicare that goes along with it. So that's all that's doing is putting the Medicare to offset that line. So there's a total, total of the budget journal entries is ninety-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. This is going to continue to get to be about this size, if not bigger, because my goal is instead of coming to you in July with one big massive journal entry to balance out our budget for, to cover any cost overruns with other, um, surplus lines. I'm hoping to have that down to very little and already done by that point in time.
So you want a motion to approve those budget journal entries, Joe? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, please.
Motion made by Tara Locken, seconded by Tara Scobie. Any further questions? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Uh, also in your package, just the personnel changes to have put on file, shows one appointment and four, um, retirement and three resignations. And then for the expenditure report. Same report, I did make one change. Now, as we're getting closer to the end of the year, I removed the use of the excess and deficiency line, that hundred thousand dollars. Uh, because now we have a true operating cost. I don't think we're going to need it, to be honest with you. Uh, if you look towards the end, we're ending in a good place. And I'm continuing to manage this ending number to our, a projected E and D to make sure we don't exceed that five percent or we get close to it or maybe right under the five percent with our E and D, and it looks pretty good right now. There'll be some movement at the end of the year to either remove expense or add expense, depending what we have for our special revenue funds that we can use it with. Any questions on that? And the next one is, uh, transportation contract. So I met with, um, Neil over at Telstone. We're in our third year of the contract. The contract does have a, an, an option to extend for two additional years if we execute that. Um, in looking around at other districts and the way, uh, costs are running for transportation, costs are rising dramatically. Districts that are going out to bid are seeing extraordinary increases above and beyond what, what's recommended here. I did do a comparison, this, this sheet here compares us to Menden Upton, because they also use Telstone and they're pretty local. The bottom line is just the percentage and the amount less that we're currently paying than what Menden Upton is being charged. And their contract goes through twenty-six. Our extension would bring us to twenty-seven. We are considerably lower than Menden Upton, um, so
When were they updated last?
When were their rates?
When did their contract start?
I believe it started in twenty-three, and it looks like their contract goes through twenty-six. This is what I've gotten from them. Now, whether they have an extension beyond this, I'm not sure. Uh, I did put a copy of our contract in there for you to look at. It's my recommendation that we, we execute the two-year extension, because in twenty-six, the extension goes up four percent in cost. And in twenty-seven, it goes up five percent, but even with those increases, we're still well below what we're, when I talked to Neil, I did try to bring Neil down a little bit, and he even said there's no way, because he's out there issuing bids now that are well beyond this. And he said, you'd be smart to extend it because you'd be locked in. And I tend to believe him on that. So I'm just asking for permission to execute that two-year extension to take us to twenty-seven.
So moved.
Motion made by Jane, seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. And then the final piece for me is we completed our administrative review. Desi came in, did administrative review of our food service program. Some minor findings that we've cleaned up. We've already responded to them. Uh, we've put corrective action plans, but one of the issues that came up was they looked at the adult meals and they said, the revenue we're taking in for our adult meals is not offsetting the expense and the cost of the meal. Those adult meals still use as federally subsidized food, so we can't give away those meals. What they said was, right now, we're charging for a, a, adult lunch, it was five dollars. And for an adult breakfast, it was two dollars and fifty cents is what we're charging. They, they responded and said, we should be charging at least five dollars and twenty-eight cents a lunch. My opinion is, when talking to Christine, the interim food service director, we're not in the business of feeding the adults, we're in the business of feeding the kids. So I'm asking to raise the adult lunch to six dollars, which I think is reasonable. You're not going to be able to find a six dollar lunch anywhere other than here, and raising the adult breakfast to four dollars. And that way we're safely not subsidizing meals with federal funding.
Why is the, um, breakfast such a jump? I know, I know it's only two fifteen to four dollars, just is that like to cover it or is
It's to cover, I think even, they didn't call out the breakfast meals, but the breakfast meals are costing a lot more than two dollars and fifteen cents. We were thinking about going up to five, but then we, we said, no, let's just jump it to four. And I think we'll be safe at that level for the next couple of years.
Do you happen to know about how many we sell?
I don't have exact numbers. It's not a lot. Um, there's a few. One thing I did find out, there's some charging going on too. If they don't come with money, that's that's going to come to a conclusion. We do not charge meals. But
Do we offer tap? Tap to pay or is it cash?
It's cash.
It is cash.
Well, they can get a MySchool bucks account if they wanted.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we recommend.
They can, they have, did you say they have the option for MySchool bucks?
Sure.
Is this every building too? It's not just the high school. It's everywhere we have a cafeteria.
It's throughout the district, yeah.
Who knows?
I mean, it's a good deal.
Four bucks.
I do hear about the donut sticks in my house, so.
I've never had those.
You know, I heard about those. And then, middle school honor roll breakfast, I had one.
Right? I know, I wouldn't like run for it, but
That was the talk of the breakfast.
How much federal funding is it, are we utilizing to cover what's not covered, I guess? That's my question.
I, I'd have to look into the exact number.
I kind of want to know before we increase it.
Well, to cover the federal funding, it would have to charge at least five dollars and twenty-eight cents. That's what, that's what Desi said to us.
Okay.
So we're short by that twenty-eight cents.
I'll make a motion to approve this as recommended. It's such
Motion made by Erin.
Where else can you get breakfast?
Yeah.
Second.
Second by, was that you, Tara?
Yes.
Second by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
And the, the students lunches are still
That does nothing to do with the kids.
That's when we have a deep discussion.
They are still going to be free.
Hundred percent free, yeah. Program's running really well.
All the trouble we
Oh, my God.
Uh, next one is the grant.
Yes, yep, I'll do a quick overview. Um, just want to, um, thank DA Early for our annual, uh, it's either a post-prom or post-graduation, uh, grant. We apply for each year and we're very pleased to be awarded again this year, the one thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, and so we need, uh, the school committee to accept the grant.
So moved. A motion made by Chuck, seconded by Matt. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Just thank them. People that are listening, like you said, it's either post-prom or post-graduation. We use it for post-graduation.
Yes, we're doing a graduation, uh, after graduation.
After graduation.
Yeah, the ring, yep. It was a nice event.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Scott, you're up. Facilities update.
Not as late as I anticipated.
Still early.
Well, we can make this last. So another productive April vacation. Several things were done. We got the floor tiles done in the cafeteria. Well, a large majority of them. They just need a coat of wax on them. They do stand out because they are newer, so Joe Malali did a great job replacing those. Industrial burner came in, got the circulator pump changed during April break. Everything is up and running now. They do still have to come back and rebuild one circulator pump, which leaks from time to time, but we're not running the heat. It's not an issue right now. A and M compressor, I'm still waiting for them to come in and give us a quote on replacing the head. John Deere tractor has a clutch issue. John Deere on one forty-six in Millbury came, picked it up on the twenty-fifth. They called me with the price to get it fixed. I'm hoping to have that back by graduation. I bring my pallet forks in at graduation so that we can lift the chairs up, bring them around the building, set up graduation. Five hundred-plus chairs. Middle school, third-floor student bathroom had a cracked toilet. The head custodian picked up a new toilet, and that was installed this past Saturday while working the district of one event. I was running between two buildings to kind of supervise, make sure it was done right. Kevin Rastakot did that job. He did an excellent job. Saved the district money by not having to pay a plumber, obviously. Also during April break, the custodians here went up on the roof, changed air filters, greased the bearings, changed belts, whatever was bad. So those are good to go. JFK, again, we had to shut the power down to the building, so it was good to do that during April vacation. And they found that the generator had a bad voltage regulator, which was causing the power to surge. That was changed out. It was tested. Everything is up and running. Hand railing on the ramp was pulled out from the wall again. I've been told that students are hanging off of it, and this is why it keeps happening. So I installed a larger lag shield in there, tightened it up, and it'll be good for another twenty years. Millville Elementary, again, was able to pull all the custodians together for two and a half days, went through whatever rooms were not being used. That's time. Got them cleaned, ready to go. Again, it's good to, no matter which direction we go, get in there, keep them clean. Toilets were getting quite a bit of rust buildup in them, so those were all scraped and cleaned and good to go. And then last night, on the way to the Millville town meeting, Jimmy Sullivan called me, and the sewer pumps at the high school, they went into alarm. They weren't running. I was able to call Chris Palmer, Palmer Electric, ask them to meet me out there at 5:00 a.m. This way, we could decide whether or not we have to cancel school. So after a late night at the town meeting and getting up at 4:00 a.m., I'm a little bit slap happy now, so... So, yeah, so it came down to it that there was a loose wire on one of the contacts, and it was going in and out. So we put the pumps in alarm, tightened it up. We had to wait for the water to go back up high enough so the pumps would kick on, so that was an all-day event. He's gonna meet me out there tomorrow morning, just to make sure everything is up and okay. It's not an issue. We can have school tomorrow regardless, because we can bypass the pumps and get them running, so everything's good. We're just gonna make sure that the pump station is not in a... That is it.
Scott, I got something for you.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know, I had mentioned it to Darlene. I don't know if she had mentioned it.
Pitchers mound.
Yep.
Yeah. Unfortunately, like I told Darlene, our tractor is out being fixed, but I am confident that we can take whatever dirt is there, scrape it up. And if I have to, we'll chuck some over in a wheelbarrow and get it.
You know, it's supposed to be ten inches higher than home plate. There's, like, measurements it's supposed to be, because it changes the mechanics when they're pitching.
Yeah, yeah. I remember when I first started as the groundskeeper, I had built that up nice and high, and then I got complaints that it was too high. I guess it enables the kids to throw the ball a little bit harder.
It changes the whole mechanics. There's measurements. I don't know them off the top of my head. I'm sure I could get them.
Yeah, I can get them on the...
Yeah.
But yes, it will be addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And also during April vacation, I replaced the long jump boards that Chuck had requested, put a nice photo of white and purple paint on them.
Nice.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Scott.
Now, I hope they all know their ours.
Andrew Scott?
That's it. Any questions?
Were you able to get that F-650 back from the middle school?
It's still sitting there in case anybody missed it.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah. Well, today with the pump station, that basically took much of my time, as well as the mower broke down over here today, so I had to come over here and fix that also, so... Okay.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll stay here in case there's anything on the facilities.
Feel free to stay right there.
I'll feel free.
Facility requests.
I can hear you better over here, too.
Okay. So we have three facilities requests, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, actually, I'm gonna kick them over to Joe.
Sure. I'll just run through each one of them real quick. The first ones for French River collaboratively come out, from what I understand, they do a week's training here on site with us. They're group three. They want to use the auditorium and the media center. It's from July twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The second one is the baseball banquet. That is in June, looks like the fifth, it was the sixteenth rain date, Thursday and Monday, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's a group one, so there's obviously no charge for that.
Okay, can I, sorry, speak to that?
Is that the night before graduation?
No, it's the week after. It does show there's a fee. Can we just make a note that there's no fee?
Oh, the seven fifty.
Seventy dollars.
Seventy dollars.
I'm not sure. Oh, my speed could be...
It's by understanding that they were gonna use the kitchen staff to prepare food, but I guess that's...
Is that what that would have been? Because we were asking for a quote. We're not gonna go that direction. It was over our budget. So, okay, that actually explains what the seventy was, but we won't need that, so...
So leave the seventy. You don't want to remove that.
Remove it. We don't need it. Yeah, so we want it zero. We can't afford it.
The final one is youth basketball league, I believe. Isn't that bimble? Is that what we say?
Yes.
That is from July twenty-first to twenty-fourth, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty a.m. to two p.m. They want to use the gymnasium at the high school. They're group two.
Also, I scheduled the gym floor to be resurfaced after this camp, so the high school gym floor will be done in August.
Thank you. Also, on the baseball banquet, we don't need the rain date. We will have it on the fifth, rain or shine.
I don't know why it was a rain date if it was inside.
We're dating using the field, but it's like, if it's nice out, we'll go out and play, kickball, wiffle ball, something. If not, we don't have it outside.
Parents versus players.
So I just have one question about the dates. Back to Mary, the paper that's up on our screen still. The summer program at middle school is running the seventh through the thirty-first. So for French River, it says media center and auditorium, and would they be okay with classrooms if it needs to be separated?
Well, we can check with them. I'm sure they would be.
I don't know how large their group is.
What areas is Mary using for the summer program?
Well, that's the twenty-first century.
Twenty-first century.
Here. I'm sure they use the cafeteria.
So would we allow an outside organization coming inside the building while the kids are in the building, right?
It is the same time, so eight to three and eight to two.
The, so the course is for all educators, so typically, anyone that would be involved in that would be, Corey checked the background check. It's a...
Is there a reason we couldn't have them at, like, MES? There's a lot of space there.
We don't have water.
The French River, like, does, do you think the building, it's building-specific?
Millville's not gonna wanna give them water.
Well, Millville supplies the water right now for our administrators, too.
So I can just say that in the past, they've always used the media center. In fact, we had a brief discussion about this, Joe and I. We do have a school committee that week as well, so they're gonna have to move their stuff off of our tables so that we can...
They're gonna have to clear out.
And they do it every year. It's not an issue.
But, but the middle school program, it was here last summer, too, but it was usually at the complex, the CCL, the...
Do they use this room?
It was at the complex last year.
Oh, is this gonna be the first summer they're here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, the twenty-first century.
Yeah. So French River might have been here all the time, but our CCLC wasn't.
We'll find a space for them.
Or can they go to the complex?
We can move them to a different building.
So should we just approve it? Space to be determined?
Do that, then we could reach out to them, yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna not approve it. It's eleven hundred dollars, but I was saying, it would definitely be a conflict of space and time.
And the options would either be the cafeteria or the media center, so I would think they, you know, have French River in here and the students in the cafeteria. They're both air-conditioned.
For that one day, or that one week?
That one week.
That one week.
And then the bimble dates, can we just make sure that Darlene is aware of those before she schedules her? I don't know if any of her...
Because that's up there, too. It says various dates.
I don't know if any of them are happening at the high school, or if hers are all at the middle school.
Did she, on her schedule, did she, I think she outlined the...
She didn't say where.
Oh, the location you're talking about, okay.
I just don't want her planning activities in the gym, and then bimbles in the gym, and she's scrambling.
So I also have the gym floor over here at Hartnett Middle School. They're gonna start on it the last day of June and finish it July first. There'll be no students in the building, so I can...
So it'll be done before CCLC and before basketball camp and before...
Again, basketball camp is at...
At the high school now. Is that floor being done?
After, the basketball camp.
In August.
So we'll review the Freck location and the basketball league schedule with Darlene.
Yes.
So we're looking for a motion to approve all facilities requests contingent on finding the proper location.
So moved.
Motion made by Carrie.
Second.
Seconded by Tara and Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Jane, if we were going to speak, can I just, I just want to kind of make an announcement. So we are having, and I know the principal sent this out in the newsletter, and my person's gonna send it out, it's community, on May twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday. Last year, we have great relationships with our schools around us, and I speak often with the special education director in Bellingham. And last year, they invited us to a Special Olympics event. It's a small event. We try to keep it small so it's not overwhelming from students. They've invited us yet again. It was a great event last year, so on that day, we're having a Unified Spirit Day to kind of celebrate inclusivity, our students with disabilities, and kind of have a really nice send-off for our athletes who are gonna be heading over to Bellingham that day for their events. So again, it's Thursday, May twenty-ninth, and the rain date is the thirtieth. We're asking all students and staff to wear purple and gold that day. We have twenty-four of our athletes, our special education athletes, participating that day. We're hoping to bring along our charger horse. I think we have a student who may come and, you know, be the, to put on that uniform that day. I know Mrs. Fowles was reaching out last year. We had five high school volunteers that helped with our kiddos, so that, we're gonna do that again. And I wanted to say a huge thank you and shout out to Neil Telstone, because I did ask him, because our numbers increased this year, although we're using our vans, I asked him if he would donate, you know, one of the buses that day, and he is going to do that for us, too. So the kiddos will be out there. It'll be in Bellingham. It's in the morning, but we're really excited for our kids to go. And I know last year, again, it was a big celebration. The kids, you know, the elementary had signs. They sent them off. Same thing with high school and the middle school, so it'll be a great day for our kids. And I will make sure to take lots of pictures, and I'd love to share it before, you know, we head out for the summer.
Nice.
Very good. Does anybody have anything for Good and Welfare or School Committee Board?
Can I go back to something that was said to us during public forum?
Yes, you may.
Millville Board of Selectmen was questioning some of our budget items, and one of the ones that stuck out to me was the four thousand dollars in police details at our athletic events. I don't know if they've ever attended any of our football games or our Friday night basketball games, where we have a lot of our students, a lot of our community members, a lot of the other towns' community members and students. Questioning a four thousand dollar police detail, I think that is a very small number in our overall budget, and I would just urge some of the members of both towns' Boards of Selectmen to come out to actually see some of our events and how many people are managed by one police officer at those.
Carrie, to piggyback that, they should visit another school, too, because they will see officers there at their games as well.
Yes. The safety of our students has never been something this board has taken lightly. And I just, out of all the things that were questioned in our budget, that one really struck a nerve with me. Just wanted to mention that.
Well, I'm gonna piggyback on top of that, because fortunately, and I give credit to, you know, Officer Gould in Millville, who is SRO and full-time police officer during the course of the day. And Blackstone, our SRO is fully funded by the Town of Blackstone, our full-time SRO dedicated to the districts, all the students of the district, of the buildings in town. And the Town of Blackstone is outside of the district, it's throwing a hundred thousand dollars, you know, and it's a budget item that the people pay for. The school committee, together, has never, ever questioned, like, questioned spending on security, and we actually have executive sessions because our security is so well here that we don't promote it. And our police department, by the way, gives a reduced rate for the school district for these, and they're a union. They give a reduced rate, where they don't have to, for the school district, and get other departments, when we need other details, at that reduced rate. So I understand that, you know, a new selectman, there's a learning curve, and that's fine. I appreciate asking questions and making statements, and you learn as you go along, but we're here, as the elders, we're here to clarify the information when people are in doubt, I would say. Anyone else have anything to add?
Yeah, I'll piggyback off of that, but it is, and it is about selectmen, and I have a few notes here, so bear with me. I know I wasn't at the last meeting, so I've had these notes a little prior to that. And I, first, I want to thank everyone that did come out in Millville last night. I actually wasn't in attendance. I was not able to get the time off, but I do appreciate everyone that did support all of our items for Millville Town Meeting last night. And with that being said, I have sat at home or listened in my car to many of the meetings leading up to last night for Millville. So Board of Selectmen, FinCom, their joint meetings, their public hearing, I've heard them all. I was not there in person, but I've heard them all. I'm gonna point out specifically April seventeenth's meeting, where Selectman Joseph from Millville, who was not here tonight, I just want to point out, that he made a statement stating he had no faith in our school committee and that we have dragged our feet to put the children back in that building. And I'm appalled by the way he even stated it, because he's never actually attended one of our meetings or dealt with any of the water situation. At no time have we wanted the kids out of that building. But their health and safety has always been a priority of this committee, and I'm actually very glad that I can still sit here tonight and talk about this, and that is still our top priority, and that we didn't overlook that tonight as a committee. It was disgraceful to hear any insinuations that the movement of that entire building was for anything except for health and safety. The insinuations of, it's a tactic for a new high school. It's a tactic to, like, we don't want to give that building back to that town. And the insinuations have been there. I was actually, right before we voted tonight, I was going to ask if there was anyone here that wanted to speak in favor of it, because for some reason, when they sit at their meetings, the Millville Board of Selectmen, they are constantly saying that they hear from so many community members and how they are upset, and they want the kids back in that building. And we've, I've never gotten that communication, never gotten one email saying, why aren't my kids back in that building? Why aren't we using that building? And no one here tonight spoke in that manner either. So I kind of wanted, I didn't want to do it to be in your face, but I did want to ask that question, if there was anyone here that was in favor of it. Maybe they didn't get up and talk, because there were so many negatives. But according to Jennifer as chair in the past, and there's been so much, there's been so much communication about getting back there. It's a beautiful building. It's very well maintained. They pointed that out. But I want to point out that that's because of us and our custodians and the work and being back in there just two weeks ago. We have painted in the summers. We have stripped floors. We have redone gyms. That is all on our expense. We have maintained that building, and the value of it, so a little credit where credit is due. is due. And how dare they insinuate that we're disregarding that building? Moving on to their joint FinCom and Selectmen's meeting, which was held before the FinCom open hearing, I believe the chair of the FinComs stated that two of the four Millville School Committee reps didn't support the override, but expected their budget to be fully funded. I know that I'm one of them. I honestly don't know who the other one is. They did not say names, but I know the, the specific things they said were speaking of me. I want it, I want to make it known that I supported that override until I watched the FinCom meeting, where it was publicly called out that our town administrator had not done the necessary paperwork to submit free cash. And I want to explain to the public and to all of you that free cash is, is equal to our E and D. If we did not submit that to the state at the right time in the fall, we would not have that number when we start working with our budget. We typically get an email sent to all of us with the certified E and D number in mid-January, and we know the balance of our checkbook. And that is what free cash is in a town. That's what our E and D is here. If you don't know the balance of your checkbook, how do you start your budget process? So for the Town of Millville to sit there and say they needed a million-dollar override, oh, nope, we're gonna bring it down to 750. Oh, it's really 650. We promise we're not gonna spend it, but not know what their checkbook's balance was to start that process is, it's wrong. It's wrong in every way. You wouldn't run your house that way. We would not, if we showed up to our joint meetings or our town selectmen and FinCom, and we couldn't tell them how much money we had in E and D, they would eat us alive for asking for money, when we can't tell them how much money we have. And that's exactly what they just tried to do to our town. So for me to speak out against it, and I thought I was very clear, I was speaking, A, as a towns person, not as a school committee member. I didn't say, don't approve this override, but make sure the school gets their money. And they insinuated that I did. What I said was, how can you ask for an override when you don't know how much money you have? But FinCom presented a budget without using an override and asked point-blank where the free cash stood. And they had a budget option to, to use their free cash, the assumed number. I have no faith in the Millville Town Administrator, because, and they can say that, well, that number's fluctuated through these four and five years. It's fluctuated because he hasn't submitted it in a timely manner for the state to give it back. And in that meeting, when he admitted to it, he also stated, made it sound so frivolous, well, oh, they say if you don't do it by October, you, you might miss out on some state aid. Guess what? We probably did as a town. But for myself to be called out on not supporting override, but wanting my, my school budget fully funded, was just wrong, because FinCom had presented a budget that worked without an override. That's what I supported. And, and again, I just want to point out that any time I'm speaking, it's as a taxpayer of Millville. Whether I'm sitting at this table, whether I'm on my social media, or having a conversation, and all of us have the right to do that. I was not speaking for the school committee in whole. Again, I don't know who else didn't support it, but they had my support until the, that mistake was publicly spoken of. And then I was like, you know, I don't support this, because you can't tell me how much money you have. So just wanted to say, I've had those notes for a bit, and it's been several meetings that I've had to listen to them talk about our committee. I kind of wished he was here to, you know, we, we made our decisions based on the kids first, and I think we always have. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Erin. I'm just gonna touch on one thing, too. You said that it would be like us not showing our E and D to them on time. And where, the question of transparency and accountability, those words get drawn out there.
Those were used tonight.
We're required to provide the accountants of both towns our certified E and D annually. And we do on, in a timely manner. So anyone suggesting that we have slush funds and any of that nonsense, and, and we're required to have our budgets certified and, 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 what do we call our...
I'm sure the towns are, too, Dan.
No, no, no. No, no, no. We're required, the school district's required to have their budget, we're voted on our budget 45 days before. So we, we, we do all our legwork first, while the towns are still, we, we're still, we're getting our insurance numbers and increases at the same time as the towns, so we're, we're budgeting based sometimes blind, you know, on the, on these things, where the towns have more time waiting for our numbers and, and things like that. So I think there's a lot of, unfortunately, there's a lot of misunderstanding or a, a, a choice of not wanting to understand how the regional agreement works, when it fits, when it fits someone's political narrative. But the regional agreement has outlast, I mean, has been around since 1967. Hasn't changed much, but the, the actual funding of it and the, and the, and the formula to it, what's dictated by the agreement and mass general law, really hasn't changed. And people have had since 1967 to learn or come in, come and ask us, and, and they just somehow, it's like Groundhog Day every, every year, with certain groups in both communities that just don't want to, fail to underst, they choose not to want to understand it. And unfortunately, that's gonna be symptomatic of politics and budget seasons. Oh, Mr. Superintendent.
Is it okay, can I add something to that? So I just want to mention a couple of things, because I, I do want to apologize to Tanya Pollack for how I responded to her comment this evening, and I'm not excusing it. But this conversation is really important, because it's a driver of it. The negativity in this school system, the past few months, has been completely out of control. For somebody who's here, 60-plus hours a week, that is charged with the education of our kids, and I'm so glad Wendy Greenstein said what she said, because to our, to our families and friends that are listening in, we've spent more time addressing negative comments, mistruths, dishonesty, and it starts with the budget cycle every year. But this season was unlike anything I've experienced the past seven years, and frankly, can't take it anymore. So to anybody who's listening at home, please stop. Please stop, because it takes away the energy that the adults that are charged with taking care of our kids actually need to put into the kids, that need to put into the teachers. And so I felt badly, because my negativity wasn't directed at Tanya, but it came out that way. And so my apologies to her for that. But to anybody who is tuning into this, the negativity just has to stop. It has to, because at the end of the day, the school district is constantly in the bull's eye, because it's a budgetary piece, or it's an election piece, or it's, I'm not happy with, you know, what I'm hearing, or what I think I'm hearing, or what I think the truths are. It needs to stop, because it is an energy suck, and it takes the attention and effort off of the kids. So kudos to Wendy for identifying that, because she's right. We've spent more time, not this, not this body, but just in general, fighting about things that are just not true. They're just not true. And there's so much politics in play at it, and I, and I wish it wasn't the case. But moving forward, I hope the community will, will, will put the brakes on some of this stuff, and let the adults in charge of the kids focus on what the kids need. Sorry to Tanya for that.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Anyone else have anything to add?
Yep, Tara.
Oh.
I just have a positive little fun fact. As I was driving by the high school today, I had to pull in for the baseball practice, and the ice cream truck was there, and Coach bought the team ice cream.
Oh, nice.
So I just thought that was cute, a shout-out. Thank you.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Awesome. Anyone else? Okay, we are gonna go into executive session, not to return, and I will make this final comment before I ask for a vote to go into executive session. We have received the superintendent's resignation today, and we will be working on a transition plan. It'll be on our next agenda, and the, the school committee will be very open and transparent about that, that plan moving forward. And with that, I would take, I'll take a motion to, we're gonna go into executive session, not to return. We will adjourn an executive session. I'll take a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Seconded by Jane Reggio, and I'll take a roll call vote. Jane?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tara S?
Yes.
Tara L?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.